Well, good evening, residents of Everett. I would like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting on December 18th, 2024. For information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit everettwa.gov/citycouncil. We have a big crowd tonight, so I really appreciate that. And we do have limited capacity here in our chambers, and we ask everyone to remain seated as much as possible and not gather here in the entryway. If there's no seats available, we have a TV set out there in the lobby, and it is 30 seconds delayed, so you can just think of it as a stereo. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Toohey?
Here.
Councilmember Bader?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Here.
Councilmember Vogel?
Here.
Councilmember Fosse?
Here.
President Schwab?
Yes, and this time I'd like Councilmember Zarlingo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This time I'd like Councilmember Ryan to lead us in the land acknowledgement.
Thank you. The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Snohomish People and their successors, the Tleilul'p tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and waters. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes, to include a future that includes their voices, their people, and their stories, to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you very much. So, on for the agenda, there's been a request from the mayor's office to remove item number And then, without objection, I'm moving agenda number 16 to follow item number 21. So, remove seven and moving agenda item number 16 to follow agenda item number 21. Thank you. So, on to old business. So, do I hear a motion approval of the minutes for December 11th, 2024?
Councilmember Ryan moves approval.
Seconded.
Motion seconded and made. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Good evening, mayor.
Good evening, President Schwab and council and community. I'm going to start off tonight by honoring our water filtration plant team. The water filtration plant had three years of continuously optimized performance above national standards for our drinking water treatment work. Representatives from the Washington State Department of Health will be presenting us with a top award that stands for Treatment Plant Optimization. Providing and maintaining safe and reliable drinking water is one of the most critical services we provide as a city. Everett Public Works prides itself on providing world-class drinking water to our customers. Our filtration plant works every day to make sure that the water we produce is safe and that we meet or exceed all state and national standards. WFP staff deserve every bit of the credit of this award. Their attention to detail and dedication to their critical roles in protecting public health is exemplary. As a large regional water utility, the city is committed to investing in critical infrastructure to provide better public health protection for the people of Everett and all our water customers in Snohomish County. Please join me in welcoming Laura McLaughlin, Regional Environmental Engineer with the Washington State Department of Health, to present the award to Jeff Mars, Operations Superintendent, and Ryan Sasse, Public Works Director, on behalf of the water filtration plant. Please come on forward. Oh, yeah, yes, you're already here.
Before we give the award, we wanted to give a... We wanted to give a little background on this program. It's a federal program. We encourage water utilities to go above and beyond the regulations. For example, this program in Washington State is based on a federal program in many other states, and it focuses on some specific goals that have to do with water clarity and chlorination. And they're quite a bit more stringent than the plant is required to meet, about three times as hard. And we also require, we also ask them, we challenge them to meet these strict goals, and we ask them to monitor more closely, so they have to look harder for mistakes. And Everett has done a phenomenal job. They've met it not only last year, but the year before that, and the year before that, which is a great accomplishment. And it is also the result of a culture of excellence at Everett that we see from day to day. PJ Wilkerson and I are the regional engineers for Everett, and we hear from the treatment plant staff on a regular basis when issues come up, when they're changing their dose calculations. They get ahead of things before any risks arise, and they are, they have a clear culture of excellence and curiosity that we're really proud of. Before we give the award, did you want to say a few words?
I would. Mayor, council, my name's Derek Pell. I'm the regional manager, so I work with Everett, and I have for 33 years. So, I've been around a long time. And the award tonight is really celebrating three years in a row, but what I really want to comment on is it's a long-term relationship. And as Laura explained, it's a very high bar above and beyond the minimums of the regulations, so there may have been a blip four years ago. But I want to say that the water that is produced in Everett is world-class. You draw water from a pristine aquifer, or a pristine water source up in the mountains. It's exceptionally well-treated. Your team of professionals is... You can't get any better. They're really great, and it's a legacy of that. I could go back and name people for the last 30 years that I have really enjoyed working with and have maintained that level of excellence. So, it's with great pride that we're here today, and we get to celebrate people that have done an extraordinary job. Thank you. Congratulations.
We really, really appreciate you, and I know I speak for all of my colleagues up here. We're so grateful for your dedication and the work you do to protect our drinking water. I can speak from experience, and when I go and speak with other mayors across the country, it is not the same for them. There's a lot of challenges and lack of safety in drinking water, and it keeps them up at night. And I can just share with the public that's here today, we are in really good hands, so thank you so much, and thank you for recognizing the team today. I appreciate it.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. So, thank you. I have a few other items this evening, but first I'll invite up Chief DeRousse, because we'll be swearing in a new officer this evening. There are going to be two, two new officers.
Just one today.
Just one this evening, okay.
I have the pleasure of introducing you to Lucas Carmona. Lucas was born in New Haven, Connecticut, and graduated from Hamden High School in 2016. After graduation, Lucas joined the U.S. Army and served six years before transitioning to the Army Reserves. While on active duty, he was stationed at Fort Campbell, Kentucky, and Camp Humphrey, South Korea, and Joint Base Lewis McCord here in Washington State. He worked as both a military police officer and a military police investigator. Prior to joining EPD, Lucas was a full-time college student in Connecticut, working on his bachelor's degree in psychology. His family has promised me that he'll continue to work towards that degree once he's hired here. Lucas was inspired to become a police officer in high school through his participation in the Hamden Police Department Explorer Program. Seeing how the department actively created a positive community relationship compelled him to do the same with his career. He did his research, and he chose only to apply here at the Everett Police Department from all the way across the country. Our department's strong message of a proactive, community-oriented policing style aligned with his values. And he also vetted the department by speaking with community members about his experiences and about their experiences as well. Lucas graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on December 12th. He looks forward to getting out on patrol and participating in community events. Eventually, Lucas would like to join a proactive unit where he can work on gang-related crime. As a first-generation Hispanic American, he feels he can make a deep connection with our Hispanic and Latino community and its youth to break down barriers and change people's lives for the better. In his free time, Lucas enjoys fishing, hiking, hunting, and training his dog. He also likes spending time in the gym, playing soccer, and is a huge New York Rangers hockey fan. I present Lucas Carmona for swearing in.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept Lucas Carmona as a newest Everett Police recruit?
So moved, the motion.
Seconded.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Lucas Carmona.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I am either a citizen of the United States or a lawful permanent resident?
That I am either a citizen of the United States or a lawful permanent resident.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington?
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Everett?
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Everett.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially?
And that I will faithfully?
Honestly.
Honestly and impartially.
Perform the duties of a police officer?
Perform the duties of a police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
One thing, a couple more things I have. Item 21 on our agenda is a big one. We're at an important point in our stadium project where our council will be making an important decision on the site for the new facility. And again, I want to share, it's not often that we have an opportunity to make an investment, an infrastructure investment, that has a return on that investment, and I really look forward to capitalizing on this opportunity. And I want to thank our council for their work and support of this project and their willingness to consider this bold investment, and also want to thank the Aquasocks, because I think it's important for Everett's future. Then lastly, I have a few appointments. There's going to be a lot more appointments in January for our boards and commissions, but the few appointments I have tonight are, and if it's all right with council, I'll do them all at once. To the CHIP Loan Review Committee, I have Kathy Hagie to position A1, a term expiring 12/31/28. And I also have Sharon Hale to position A2, with the term expiring 12/31/28. For our Library Board of Directors, I have Audrey Gray to position 5. Her term will expire 12/31/2029. And to our Board of Park Commissioners, I have Erin Knight, position 7, term expiring 12/31/30. I would love your concurrence on those appointments.
Okay. Do I hear motion?
Motion move to accept all the nominees?
Seconded.
Okay. Motion seconded and made. Any comments? Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes.
Thank you for those, and I have no further comments this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now it's time for a public comment, which includes written comment acknowledgement. Under our rules, written comments shall be considered in the same manner as oral comments. The person submitting comments must provide the name of the city of residence. Written comments will be entered in the official record. Hello, Angie, do we have a few comments tonight?
Good evening, President Schwab, we do.
All right.
We have some people online and in this chambers.
Could you get closer to the mic there?
Okay. Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
So, we have received a few written comments regarding the Aquasock Stadium, so I'll read those names first. Landon Olson, Kip Strong, Leon Smith, Anthony Sarden, Nathan Caffaro, Patrick Hasselbring, Ryan Morris, Jeff DeBock, Mike Elbrocht, Mark Rice, Megan Newman, Meredith Lo Prather, Nick Schiffler, Susan Patrick, Sean Collins, Mark Myers, Julie Fancillo, Kyle McMillan, Brian Lawler, Kathy and Dave Hope, and Naomi Johnson. And I provided these to council, legal, city clerk, and administration to be part of the record. And we have one person on Zoom right now, Amy. If you could unmute and turn your camera on, and you'll have three minutes to speak, just state your first, or your full name and city of residence. As soon as you see the clock on the screen, you can start speaking.
My name is Amy Guebe. I'm a resident and homeowner here in Everett. I'm also a non-practicing attorney and a member of the Washington State Bar Association and good standing. Last week, it came to my attention from other concerned residents that a local community center is being targeted by the city because of the population they serve. Hope &amp; Wellness is located on Rucker, just north of Pacific, and they provide a safe space for our unhoused neighbors for a few hours each week. The city has communicated to Hope &amp; Wellness that it is in violation of Enhanced Zoning Code, as covered by Mixed Urban Use in Metro Everett, code that, to the best of my understanding, extends or ends at the corner of the block on which they're located, mere feet away. I have been searching for it, but I have yet to find the exact zoning code that the city is using to tell Hope &amp; Wellness to cease operations by the end of February, but I would like to challenge members of city council to dig up that code section. Hope &amp; Wellness serves Everett's homeless community. They offer a place to sit, to take a bird bath, as they call it, a place to connect and be found, a place to sit with a cost-free cup of coffee, and set down worries for a short time. It's a space that offers safety and dignity and validates the humanity of our neighbors who are most marginalized in our community. I have experience with the city's Enhanced Zoning Codes and application of those codes. I was a volunteer commissioner on the city's Historical Commission for four years, and during that time, I saw how easily and how regularly city government grants exceptions to Enhanced Zoning Code through exemptions, variances, or conditional use permits. Not only is it possible for the city to grant exceptions to the particular code in question, but it already has. The city has allowed exceptions to the same code provision being used against Hope &amp; Wellness for a birthing center. Granting exceptions for a similarly situated business because they serve a different demographic reinforces both the appearance and the reality of discrimination being perpetrated by the city of Everett. Please consider our unhoused neighbors with compassion. Do not push out an organization that is serving the city's most underserved. City council, you have the power to stop this discriminatory application of zoning code, so I ask you, do you have the will? Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. So, we'll move to those in chambers, and we will start with Fred Sastrum. If you could please come to the podium. And please press the right button on the base of the mic. On the very bottom of the...
On here, got it, got it.
And then state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Fred Sastrum, Everett man born, Everett man until I die, live in Everett. Mayor Franklin, council president, Schwab, Everett City Council members. Speaking on behalf of my fellow committee members on the Fiscal Advisory Committee for the new stadium project, many of whom are present here with me this evening, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve on that committee. I can tell you that every member of the committee and every advisor to the committee was deeply engaged, and every one of them committed deeply and significantly to the report that we delivered to you last week. We enjoyed the engagement, and we trust it will help inform the decision you have here this evening. There are a few points in the report that I would like to underline as important to your decision. The first is that one of the surprises that I found as I looked into this is that only 19% of Aquasocks ticket buyers come from the city of Everett. Is that surprising to any of you? It was surprising to me, 19%. Now, what does that mean? 36% come from outside of Snohomish County. So, what that means, that our people are coming from a broad distance, and the Aquasocks are not just a local Everett institution, they are a regional attraction. They have a regional fan base. And what that means is that they are worthy of not just city support, but also county, state, and even federal support. It also means, because they're coming from distance, that many of them will dine in Everett, and many of them will stay overnight in Everett. Second, baseball and hockey are very complementary to one another. One is a summer sport, and the other is a winter sport. It is the experience of our downtown food and drink establishments that they feast during the Silver Tip season, and they fast outside of that season. Placing the stadium downtown will help to stabilize their operation. They will have a more consistent revenue flow, and subsequently, your downtown will be strengthened. Three, overall, the economic impact report estimates that a downtown site will generate between 50 and 100% more economic activity than the Funko Field site does and would even if remodeled. This represents tax revenue to the city of Everett that the committee did not include in funding the new stadium. So, that economic activity will generate tax revenues that will flow to help support the city of Everett's budget. Four, the revenue bonds that helped fund the stadium are supported entirely by revenues that are generated by the stadium.
I'm going to break in. You went over your time limit, but since you are chair of the Financial Advisory Committee, I'm going to allow you two more minutes.
Okay.
Just to be fair and transparent to our speakers.
Thank you. The annual net operating... I'll speed up. Net operating revenue before debt service for the downtown site is $2.3 million annually, compared to just $700,000 for the Funko site. I was going to echo Mayor Franklin's comments on this rare opportunity, but she echoed herself from last week, so I won't need to do that. The design-build method that is proposed with a fixed price was utilized by the Everett Public Facilities District to build the Everett Events Center. And I just want to remind our community that that project was completed on time and below budget, and there's no reason to think that the result would not be any different for the stadium here. The committee's carefully studied both Funko and downtown, and at the end of the day, the fiscal advantages for the downtown site overwhelmed those of Funko Field. Our decision was unanimous, recommending the downtown location, and given the limited revenue opportunities at Funko, it is my personal opinion that the $39 million shortfall that I put in my cover letter there just simply cannot be addressed at the Funko site without an increase in tax revenues. Conversely, the $39 million shortfall for the downtown site will not be easy to solve, but it certainly can be done. The new stadium will generate significant business interests and revenue opportunities. The strong community support for the Aquasocks and hopefully for professional soccer will encourage public funder support, and there are amenities that can be cut from the site. To close, I want to emphasize that community gathering places, like the Everett Events Center with its arena, conference center, and community ice rink, our theaters and auditoriums, gymnasiums, our music venues, our parks and ballfields, our libraries, and yes, the Aquasock Stadium, are community gathering places that make Everett a great place to live. And these gathering places help to unite our community and make us stronger. The Aquasocks are beloved by our community, and we must do all we can for them to continue being the Everett Aquasocks. Choosing the downtown stadium option is what we need to do now to make that possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, if Sir Leo could please come to the podium and state your full name and city of residence, you have three minutes to speak.
Sir Leo Lorge, our family's been here over 130 years. What... I'm not going to say that. I'm not going to. First time I came to a city council meeting, I had to get dressed up like I was going to a funeral. Henry Scoop Jackson brought me. We look like we're twins. We did have a female mayor that lasted one term. At that meeting, I made a suggestion. I got up and said, I said, why don't we buy, it was for sale for $80,000, the Rucker Mansion, and make it the mayor's house? They were all squawking, they're all dead now. There's not one alive except for me. We should buy that for the city of Everett, for the mayor's house. Everett. I packed a bunch of things, and I'm going to move, I was thinking harshly of moving out, and I went to other cities to see how they were. Wenatchee, great town. Yakima, great town. But it's not Everett. This building was built, now, I read a book when I was on a plane ride, and this was built, I think in '31 or '32, this building, by Roosevelt money, not Everett money, Roosevelt money. Of course, Roosevelt built a lot of buildings, and this sucker's still standing, it's still nice. Some of the people that come through the door the last 100 years shouldn't have never even walked through that door. I would have threw them out in the street like they did in the old days. We had a harsh police department. The Everett massacre should have never happened. Hopefully, this mayor won't cause another one. It could happen. People were in uproars. And I said, how long you been in Everett? Oh, I'm just camping out in the streets of Everett. Something happened three years ago that shook the heck out of me. I was in downtown Everett, 3:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, walking the beat. A friend of mine was with me. She's law enforcement, she's a captain.
Leo, you have to finish up here. It's a big night.
I can see that. But I'm more important than anybody in this damn room. Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Tanyus, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Austin. Please state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Hello. Legally, my name is Tabitha, but my name is Tanyus. My pronouns are they/them, and I'm a member of the Everett community. My parents are addicts, and when I went to Garfield Elementary, I was living out of a treehouse. Growing up within the unhoused community, my mother never sought help from shelters for fear her children would be taken away from her. Now, I know that's not how it works, but you can understand her paranoia. She simply didn't know what options there were. That information is hard to come by without a phone to call 211. So, we slept in a treehouse in the park, squatted in abandoned apartment buildings, wherever we could. we could. To get us off the streets, my mother then made the ultimate sacrifice. She resorted to selling her skin and when she was no longer profitable, she sold mine. I was eight years old and I felt safer on the streets. Unfortunately, my story is not unique. There are hundreds of people surviving on these streets with a similar tale to tell. I would hope that the people in charge of our city's resources would want to do what it takes to help, but from what I've seen, you've actually managed to make it harder to live on the streets of Everett. Now, I'm a trained chef and I have my food handler's permit. I'm willing to give my time and energy to make a few meals for our neighbors. However, these volunteer opportunities are hard to find. I've sent emails to the Everett City Gospel, I've sent emails to the VOA, and I've even tried to contact the Everett Food Correlation, Coalition, but none of them have emailed me back. So I figure why not just take matters into my own hands, help on my own schedule with the resources I have available. Recently, I learned about the No Vending Activity Meaniscible Code 536025 and I fear if I continue to pass out resources, I could be labeled a peddler and get charged with misdemeanor. Because I have no affiliation with any nonprofit or business, the right-of-way's permit doesn't apply to me and there isn't a permit available that will allow me as an individual to distribute meals for free. Under the No Sit No Lie laws, it further states that I am restricted to distribute food and resources. And my unhoused neighbors can't even set down their backpacks to enjoy their meal without fear being forced to relocate. You designated these buffer zones under these regulations because it is a highly populated area and your concern lies with your more fortunate residents. As you continue to expand these borders, where do you hope to relocate our neighbors? My guess is somewhere you no longer have to see them. May their presence be a reminder that you could be doing more to help them. Council members, you know what it takes to give aid to our unhoused population. You have actively made the decision to put your resources elsewhere. Repeal No Sit No Lie.
Next, Austin, could you please come to the podium, followed by Steve Os- And please state your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Austin, Everett, Washington. Do you really find us gullible, naive, ignorant, or stupid? Maybe all of the above. Do you really see us as young children who can be quelled with half-witted dismissals? No, we're none of those things. We're your constituents, we're your voter block. Do not condescend us with half-assed excuses for your failures. You say that you've worked hard, made difficult cutbacks to balance the city budget. You say, President Schwab, that after these long months of work, you're starting to finally feel the impact of the decisions. However, I don't think you're feeling much at all up there in your cozy seat, not having to truly deal with the repercussions of your decisions. Given your lack of urgency, all of yours, in finding adequate shelter for our neighbors, I'd say you're not feeling any pressure at all. If you make a mistake up there, all you have to deal with is someone like me chastising you at the weekly city council meetings. Your constituents, on the other hand, all of us, have to deal with these cutbacks on a daily basis. The closing of life-saving warming shelters, reduced library hours that schoolchildren rely on to get homework done. Fascistic policing at the hands of an overfunded department. No, I don't think you truly know what it's like facing the disparaging conditions set upon us by this council. A few of you seem to have a sliver of genuine concern for our unhoused neighbors, but we condemn your passive dismissal of our calls for equitable legislation. Two weeks ago, Fousey asked for an update on the status of Everett's cold weather shelters. Last week, we were read nearly verbatim the very, very Google-able information that is available on Everett's public website. Do you really take us as that uneducated? As a matter of fact, we're aware of exactly what resources are available and it goes far beyond what measly services are offered by the city of Everett. You say that Snohomish County is primarily responsible for the cold weather shelters and that it's simply out of your hands. Why is that? Why is it that we can't invest in our own community? You increase our police budget year after year while public services that actually better this community and could potentially reduce crime always gets cut. Across this nation, police budgets keep getting increased, yet our crime issues never get resolved. Why is that? Maybe, just maybe, incarcerating citizens for doing whatever it takes to survive these Orwellian conditions doesn't actually do anything at all. Next time you have an update for us, leave the milquetoast pleasantries aside and come to us with some tangible proof that the city council actually gives a damn about this city. I wish I could say for the entirety of these meetings, but I got to work in the morning. And if you won't waste your time doing your jobs and making the city a better place, I'm not going to waste my time sitting around here listening to you guys babble. Repeal EMC 9.54, repeal the No Sit No Lie laws. Thank you.
Steve, if you could please come to the podium. And state your full name and city of residence and you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, President Schwab, other council members. My name is Steve Os, resident of Everett for my whole life. I was going to have a little bit more lighthearted presentation, but something happened about 16 hours ago that is going to change the preface of what I'm talking to you tonight about. Approximately 16 hours ago, a driver from Metro was killed, Shawn Kim. And a member of 587, ATU 587, King County Metro. And I would just like to express my condolences to his family and all of the Metro down there. It was a senseless murder. There was no point to it. Usually you can't really figure out what's got into somebody's head to do something like that. What happened to him could have happened to any of our bus drivers. I think all of you know I'm the president of our local here in Everett, have been for 20 years now. And so I've recognized Shawn, I'd like to get to what I was actually planning on coming here tonight for. We had stuff abus, something a totally different thought process than what happened to Shawn. And I'd like to thank Mayor Franklin for coming out to stuff abus. Our Director Mike Schmider and Assistant Director Sabina Arroyo, they all came out and participated with stuff abus and I appreciated the efforts that they all made. I had members Mitch Lorenz, Dwayne Dow, they came out, my executive board members, Patrick Brooks, and Vice President Elizabeth Chamberlain, they came out and helped. Lot of hours, six days that we were out and these people came out and sacrificed their time to help the lives of other people in our community through these donations, as well as many others who offered their assistance from the Navy and National Guard and various student activity groups and many other volunteers who just like to help people in the community. I would also like to mention Susan, who would come out and she just liked to organize the bus and make it easier to transport and unload afterwards. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Fred Meyer and their staff for donating the location and providing boxes for storing the items in the bus. Just briefly, last year, 2,094 toys and gifts were collected with an estimated value of This year, 3,025 toys and gifts with an estimated value of $33,370. Last year, we had 5,703 pounds of food was donated. This year, approximately 7,000 pounds of food was donated.
Thank you very much.
So I'd like to thank you all and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. If Reese could please come to the podium, followed by Corlinda Bird. And if you could please state your full name and city of residence and you have three minutes to speak.
All right. Hi. My name is Reese Stenhouse and I live in Everett. And before we start, I want to say thank you for letting me speak on this topic of the relocation of the Aquasock's. So the Aquasock's are more than just a team. They're the heart and soul of our community. It's where we can come together to cheer on our team, make memories with friends and family, support businesses and sponsorships. Many young ball players start here in low, or in low A-ball. Well, it's not the majors, it's a great way to have young players learn how to play much better. Additionally, I think replacing the stadium is the best option and keeping a viable location for a new stadium. President Don Schwab has shown a lot of interest in keeping a local ballpark as well as the benefits of having a team in Everett as well as he does not want to affect the taxpayers. I think losing/moving the team would be one of the worst moves the entire city of Everett could make because, you know, we definitely want a team in Everett. I urge you to join me in preserving the Aquasock's as well as write the story of like our beloved baseball history and ensuring that future generations can experience the magic of baseball in the heart of our city. Before I go, I have two quotes that stand out to me from great baseball movies. Number one is the Field of Dreams, "If you build, they will come." I feel this is kind of targeted at the Aquasock's when building a new stadium. If we build a new stadium, we can get a soccer team, we can keep the Aquasock's in town as well as we can get more revenue from local businesses. And then from Moneyball, "Adopt or die. Our Aquasock's will be lost if we don't save the team." Thank you.
Corlinda, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Michelle Pendergrass.
Good morning, well, good evening Everett people. I am from California, had some misfortune that took place that I'm here. It was behind some surgery procedures. But I am a part of the unhouses that's going on. I'm advocating for those of us that are not a part of the drug or the epidemic that some of these housing agencies are focusing on and some of the people in the back, well job, young man, are talking about how can we fix this. I did my statistic and I'm satisfied by it and I'm very informed and educated on why we are here when it comes to dealing with the unhoused and homelessness. They have also joined us and I encourage all of you to try these programs for 30 days as an unhoused person, losing from circumstances behind inflation, loss of jobs, loss of income because of family, and they don't have separate places or places that is beneficial so that a person can resume their normal lives. I've also seen wasted money, wasted time. I've done statistics, gone back to a lot of the Section 8, low-income housing, anything that is based around homelessness and I'm not happy what I'm seeing. And it's sad that it's being overlooked and money is being distributed and wasted on things where I'm placed in endangerment. Since being here in Washington, Captain, I have been called on the police, there's a lot of racism and discrimination going on. I have learning challenges and stuff like that, so I need my pen, my paper, and people, the online stuff. Mayor, I have been hacked for over 20 years trying to get help. I'm a learner that's different, I'm indigenous, I'm mixed on a lot of stuff and my natural ability to learn is pen, paper, people, and help. So I'm getting attacked by DSHS. I got a restraining order going there because they had a meeting that I was not prepared for a group of people, which I've already mentioned to them. That makes me nervous because I've been attacked too much since I've been unhoused for three years. So I have so much information. I got something I want to give a copy to the sergeant, because I thought, the captain, because I thought your team gave it to you, because I am now wanting to civilly take things into court. I'm also writing down the abusers and what they're doing. And I got a letter that I wrote for you, dear lady, and all of you. And my encouragement, before you say anything, try it. Try to be unhoused for 30 days, go into programs for the need, whether it's because of lack of income due to inflation, the drug people and all the ones who are misusing the program and I'm watching it, it's sad because that's where their focus is. But it's time to end the homelessness for Americans first, starting with our Navy, our Armed Forces. They need the proper care and treatment because I'm watching and witnessing the abuses. I'm a child of God before anything else. If we do anything and follow the order that God has placed first, then follow the Constitution and amendments and everything that has been in place for America to be who we are, we need to reflect on that. May God bless you, all of you.
Michelle, if you could please come to the podium and state your full name and city of residence and you've been authorized to speak five minutes.
Thank you. Michelle Pendergrass, Precinct 13, PCO. So today, I appreciate the extra time and I probably won't need it, but just in case, I thank you. I wanted to talk about Hope and Wellness, which you all know about. And Amy Hee called in at the beginning to talk about it. And I, you have a lady who is working with our people and has success stories. She's getting people off the streets, like permanently. She's, I mean, time will tell, but at least for now, they're not in a shelter, they're in a place to live. I think if you ask people who live in my neighborhood in Mary's district, what's the issue, like what don't you like about homeless people? I think my neighbors would most, if they're going to say anything, is that, you know, they're nearby. Well, if they're in a home, they're not hanging out in anybody's front yard, they have a place. And so I just, like, we have to look at the big picture. So you have the lady at Hope and Wellness not using any city money, which apparently you need quite a bit if you're going to come up with this $30 million shortfall, $39 million shortfall. And she's providing the housing I'm talking about, a feeling of normalcy which gets them She helps them with their court dates. She's providing an opportunity for, oh, what's it called? Community service where they can actually, they're progressing from showing up to do some community service to actually like then getting through the casework and showing up to their court dates and like, this is just kind of an amazing thing that's happening in our city and we're trying to shut it down? It's just ridiculous. I just can't even believe it. Plus, all the stuff that Amy mentioned, I won't go back into it, but like it's, have you all been down there? Which ones of you have been to this place? Anybody? Liz, you've been. Have you been, Mary? Have you been, Dawn? It's really like kind of amazing, you see what she's doing down here. And in my area, and I don't want her to have to stop, she's getting referrals from Providence, from Carnegie, from the social work, paramedics from Linwood, when they pick somebody up that's from around here, they're not bringing them in to her, but there are people. It's really kind of amazing. But, oh, I had so much more to say. But anyway, I just can't remember it all. They're, as you all know, they're being pushed out by the city because of this. You can't have a social service with a front door near a sidewalk within metro city area. But there are exceptions to this rule and one of them I saw is that you can't, or I mean that you can be an exception if it's infrequent. Well, she only has people come to her door four times a month. That's not so frequent, I don't think. Also, you know, she is doing other things. Like I said, all the casework. She's also serving as a meeting space for some local organizations, one of which I am in. She's, and when I say she, I mean Jasmine, the lady- She's, and when I say she, I mean Jasmine, the lady running this business, or, or organization slash business, whatever we want to call it. It's not using city money, and she's doing good things. Anyway, I know you guys are giving her a short reprieve to the end of February, but I really, like, I want to ask you to, like, think big picture. She's helping. She's getting people off the streets. And I guess I'll just leave it at that. I had more to say, but it's a mess, and it's been a really long week. But I know you guys want to do the right thing, and I just want to make sure that you really are. Don't get rid of this good service from my area, please.
Thank you. Mayor, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I just want to, there's been a couple of questions on Hope &amp; Wellness, and so I might not have all the details correct, because I'm not the planning director and the planning team that's been working with, as well as our community development team. But we've been working with Hope &amp; Wellness for well over a year. They've been out of compliance. Sadly, we have, as you all know, a, an ordinance that says you cannot offer clinics or social services on the ground floor in a very limited footprint of Metro Everett. And we off, we allow these organizations throughout the city or on the second floor, but very limited footprint in the, in Metro Everett, because that area is reserved for commercial retail and coffee shops, restaurants, those types of things. We have been working, our, our community development team and our planning team, has been working with Hope &amp; Wellness for a year or more to let them know that they're not in compliance. They've, they've been doing this unpermitted work for a while. And they have another space that we have been helping them relocate to. We have also offered multiple extensions of their time here. And I will talk to our team in planning and community development and try to get a more formal and thorough update to council, just to answer your questions, since it's come up at the last few meetings. I want you to have all the information that they have on the work that's being done. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the comment. Angie?
The remaining individuals would like to wait till we get to item 21.
Okay, and then how many, how many do we have for item 21? A handful.
Seven.
Okay, seven. Is there any other items that they, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to council member comments. Councilmember Toohey.
Just real quick, I wanted to congratulate Ryan and Jeff and their team for our water and our new police officer and our new appointments, and other than that, I have no other comments.
Councilmember Bader?
Thanks, Council President Schwab. A real quick library board meeting last night, you know, real, real good meeting. Obviously, the library director recapped many of the comments that we've been getting as well, concerns about library hours and the response she's given, which I think most of us have read about the challenges they have in, in doing anything different than they, than the library hours they presently have programmed. And they also heard a report from our community development department, the social workers, about the work they do, helping people, some people who are using the library, and discussion about how we can make sure everyone feels comfortable using, using the library, given differing needs of people who make use of that. So anyhow, great meeting, great discussion on the part of the library board, and just grateful for the library board members. And finally, I just want to wish our community a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and good wishes for any other holidays that will be celebrated in the near future as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Great, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. I have had a chance to tour Hope &amp; Wellness a few times, met with Jasmine a bunch, and have her on my phone. So, I have been there and appreciate, I agree, she does, she does, she's the helper that we should be looking for in the community when we talk about how we can help those that are the most vulnerable in our community. So, I appreciate that there will be an update. I would like to also ensure that the request from Amy Hee about the specifics on the code that she was looking for could also be included in that report. And also, an expanded view of plans to reinstate plans for day centers. There was the day center that we had put ARPA money towards that didn't work out, and there were some other centers that had closed down over the last few years. So just ways that we can make sure that if a person is having a difficult time during the day, that they do have a place to go besides our libraries or in addition to our libraries. So if that could be included, that'd be great.
Yeah, it will do. And Community Development Director Julie Willian and I met today, and I can tell you her team continues to actively look for a day center and find a location. So I will invite her to give us an update.
Thank you. And then for my report, last Thursday, I attended the volunteer appreciation event that the city hosted, and it was a great turnout, a lot of folks from neighborhoods and from our boards and commissions that joined and a number of awards that were presented to for the good work that people do to help bolster our city through a volunteer advocacy group work that they do. So, congrats to our new board appointments tonight as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Zerlingo?
Well, second, Councilmember Ryan's thanks for the boards and commission members. I was at the same event last week with you and with Mayor Franklin and Councilmember Vogli, and we really appreciate that, that their perspective and insights power a lot of what we do. Let's see, in the past week, I've represented Everett at Snohomish County's Regional Law and Justice Council, and also at the Puget Sound Regional Council's Transportation Policy Board, but I'll leave updates to that for later, given the length, likely length of our meeting tonight. Couple of timely things. One of them, I'd like to congratulate our Everett Fire Department. They recently had nine new graduates from the Snohomish County Fire Academy. So, great to see us having some success in public, in public safety areas that way. And then lastly, with respect to the water filtration and the public works in Everett and the quality of that, you know, I don't think most people understand that our municipal water is regulated differently than bottled water. And it may be a surprise to many, but the, there's every reason to think you can have a lot more confidence in the quality of the water coming from your tap here in Everett than there is from the water you get in a bottle. They work really hard at that. It's one of those things that's not terribly exciting, but is really important. I've been to that facility. I've talked to the folks there. And on both ends of our water supply and our water treatment plants, that's really being done well. It's expensive work, as a couple of people have commented, but it's absolutely vital, and you don't understand how important it is until something goes wrong. And, you know, we have, we have, especially with respect to surface water, we have water here that has far fewer of the kind of contaminants, the forever chemicals that people worry about. So, congratulations to that team for sustained, really very high performance. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Vogli?
Thank you. I want to thank folks for coming in. Yes, I see all of you, and I'll thank you all later, but the ones that have already spoken, those are some very heartfelt, not speeches, but stories that you told us. So thank you for being vulnerable enough to share those stories. And then also Fred, I remember, I think the last time you got up and said such a well-thought-out speech was for the Norton Playfield that wasn't able to happen quite a few years ago. I think I had a shaved head at that point. So thanks for coming again and talking about the importance of, well, various people doing what they can. It reminded me that perhaps other cities should actually pitch in, because I know that there's a vote happening tonight, and we're going to talk about it later, but since I want to talk about what people have already said, perhaps other peoples could pitch in their fair share of finances for this Aquasock Stadium that no doubt will come about. We do absolutely ask other jurisdictions to do their fair share for homeless services in the county. That's been long-winded in many years, that we're asking others to go ahead and help out the homeless situation in our entire county and not leaving it up to just Everett. So maybe we can also do that for the stadium as well, see how that goes for us. I'm going to read a few sad things about housing. And the median sale price of a single-family home in Everett right now is $634,400. So if you put 10% down on a home and you, with no more than 33% of the household's income going to a mortgage, a household needs to make $161,681 or more to get a loan on the house. To put that into perspective, I don't know how much you think we get paid up here, but it's about $30,000 a year. So most of us have other jobs or are retired from good-paying jobs. Median household and family income for Everett in 2023, from the Five-Year American Community Survey just released, a household could be one person, roommate, or families, and that's $81,502 a year. And family, that's related individuals living together, is $106,165 a year. And cost burdened, which is making, or more than 30% of income is going towards rent. Renters in Everett, in the city of Everett, is about 13,000 folks of 22, or a total of 58% are cost-burdened renters. And severely cost-burdened, which is paying more than 50% of your income on rent, is $6,724, or 29.8% of all renters in the city of Everett. So, you could be next, folks. You could be one of those storytellers of the folks that came and talked to us tonight. There was, oh, I also went to the volunteer appreciation event. Very nice. I came in a little late. I was called out. Good job. And I spoke with somebody, and renters actually lease jump. I didn't know that this was a thing until I spoke with somebody. And renters that are leasing, they jump from place to place and move every year for who can give them the best deal. And I also learned at that event that rent actually can increase within the hour that you're looking for rent. So if a whole bunch of people go onto one app and go for a place that is going for $1,000 a month for a three-bedroom, that's unheard of, but still, let's just say that it is, within two to 24 hours, that rent will be $2,500. And if you haven't put a deposit down at the $1,800 level, then you're going to have to pay the $2,300. So it's pretty intense out there for renters. And so if you don't rent and you've lost your housing, there is a memorial vigil on Friday to honor unhoused people who have lost their lives, not just their livelihood, but their lives, in the year 2024. And that is Friday, December 20th, at 5:15 PM over at 3,000 Rockefeller, just across the street. And that is what I will say about that right now. So enjoy your warm homes. Hanukkah starts the same day as Christmas, and other people don't celebrate any of those holidays, so season's greetings to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossey?
Thank you so much. And again, as always, I really want to express my appreciation for everyone that came to speak. I always love having people civically engaged in participating, providing insight into where you're at. Very helpful for us. Congratulations to Lucas, and thank you for your service and your willingness to serve the city of Everett. Yes, my weird brag from Everett has always been our water. And I've said it before, but every time I travel, I'm always rewarded when I come home of that nice, like, water that doesn't taste terrible like all the places I seem to travel to. So, we have fantastic water, so congratulations to that team for the good work that they do. In advance, happy holidays, and I hope everyone has a safe and happy New Year's, New Year's Eve, because we have a bit of a break coming up. But I wanted to also express my sincere condolences to the ATU 587 member. It's, it's tragic, you know, when a, when a friend or family member or fellow sibling or anyone passes away, but to be murdered when you're just trying to do your job is exceptionally devastating in my mind. So my condolences out to all those impacted by that loss. I have now a little bit of back and forth, a couple of questions. Previously, we had asked for more of an update. Since we're going to have a break now on the cold-weather shelter vacancy rates and all those things, I wanted to double-check before I proceeded if you guys were going to be able to provide that update.
I have some information in admin comments. If you, I can do that whenever.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, okay, sure. Well, Lori shared information last week about cold-weather shelter options, and I just wanted to share a couple visuals. They are easily found on the website, so folks that are looking probably already have. This is the city's webpage. I found it by searching for the word "shelter" on our website. It has links that direct you to the county hub of information, which looks like this. It's got the daytime warming centers, overnight shelter tips for those who have homes who are experiencing the cold due to power outages. There's two flyers linked on this site, so one of them has the daytime warming center info, the libraries primarily, and then also cold-weather tips for those who are housed from the health department. And then this is the list of the overnight emergency cold-weather shelters in the area. They're closed tonight because the weather's warmed up since last week, so we're above 34 degrees. That's the trigger that opens them up. The first one that's listed is the one that's operated by the Everett Gospel Mission at the UCC Church. There's 40 beds that are available there. They also have 30 overflow beds at the EGM Men's Mission, and the EGM Family Shelter is available for families needing emergency shelter. In addition, daytime warming services are available at the Men's Mission for folks that stayed at the cold-weather shelter the night prior. Finally, Everett Transit provides no fare trips to and from cold-weather shelters, and the mayor noted that we're still actively working to find an additional site in South Everett. That was all that I had prepared. I think that there were other questions that might go beyond the, this information and maybe relevant to Snohomish County, but that's what I had, so.
So, so the Everett Cold Weather Shelter, there's, you said there's 40 spots there. Opens at 8:00 PM, closes at 10:00 PM. So, that's the intake time. And then it's overnight, so when do they have to vacate?
I don't have, I didn't have that note in front of me right now.
So like, 7:00 in the morning. And the Everett Family Cold Weather Shelter, you said?
Yeah, so those would be all the, sort of, the intake hours when folks are available to?
Yes, so how many, what was the vacancy there?
You know what? I didn't have the number for the family shelter. The other number I mentioned was the overflow beds during the day.
Okay, and what, these are open to men, women, families, or is that the?
The family shelter is available for families, so that's the note that I have, who that's eligible for. And then the Men's Mission has 30 overflow beds for men seeking shelter.
Okay, but which ones of those are open right now? Because you said some of them?
None.
None of these are open right now, because it's not below 34. And just, you know, in, in a perfect world, we would have shelter, plentiful shelter beds all over the city, all over the county, open in cold weather, in rain. We don't. We are working as a city to add shelter. These are the only cold-weather shelters, and they only kick in when it's below 34 degrees. So when it's above 34 degrees, like it is today, we have our traditional shelter, which is the Everett Gospel Mission, our pallet shelters, cocoon house for youth. And those are the, and then the women's shelter at Gospel Mission. Those are the only shelters we have. And we have sadly the majority of shelters for the entire county. There's not another, other cities that have a whole bunch of shelter beds either. Sadly, there is a shelter and housing crisis all across our state.
Agreed. And my questions were more trying to provide that kind of information specifically for the public to hear, because people are going to need places to go, and these are obviously not available right now. And I do hear the blatant concern coming from the community emails in person about why we're trying to get rid of places that are providing some of those options without our tax dollars being used for it. It just doesn't really make sense to me. And I, and I understand that you're saying that the city has made some efforts to find a new location, but I also understand that they had a unique rental arrangement that was very low-cost for low cost for them, so that must be difficult to probably find a new place to be. I'm thankful that you have pushed it off till the end of February, but given that we do not have really day shelter that the city has money to put towards or has put really funds towards, and there's no place for people to go, perhaps we can, like, consider extending that a bit longer until we come up with an option for our unhoused neighbors to spend time? Because when we do have complaints and people see folks on the streets and they have complaints and, you know, anyone that doesn't want to see this, like, the best way to do that is to actually provide shelter for people, and someplace for them to go, and then they'll no longer be unhoused. And I feel like if we're going to have a place that is offering that, we shouldn't be so proactive to get rid of them.
Again, the goal is not to get rid of them, but my suggestion would be that you work on this in your Health and Human Services Committee. That would be a great spot for you to discuss the pros and cons of the ordinance as it is written, which prohibits clinics and social services on the ground floor, if that's something council as a whole wants to rescind. That would be a great spot for, to discuss that. I would encourage you to include Community Development Director Julie Willey and Planning Director Yorick in that discussion, and you might also want to include Kelly Rourke, who is our lead social worker, who works feverishly hard to connect people with social services and is also working on warming shelters, day centers, and street medicine. So I, just to be clear to the public, the city is operating a number of programs desperately trying to link people to services and working with nonprofit organizations to implement best practices and get in alignment with allowable uses per city zoning as we have in code.
I don't disagree. The city is doing a lot for a minimal amount of dollars that we have each year and still trying to expand those services on not much money to do that on. So recognition, the city is doing a lot, but this is one huge deficit, and it would be nice if we didn't have such a proactive urge to try to take away services that are being provided without the city dime when we have that deficit, point B. So I look forward to update in January on where things are at. Strong encouragement to try not to vacate some of those offerings right now until maybe summer, or we have day shelter adequately available. That would be a preference. But that is all I have so far, and I'll wait until the next agenda item. And again, happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. I attended the Seehurst Harborview Park Neighborhood Group, and thanks for the mayor and the police presence. It was very well turned out. The food was good, too. Typical conversations, traffic, of course, and speeding through that area. And also, kind of a new thing, of course, had to do with our budget, and that is the closing of park gates at night. So that's a pretty big issue. And then also, I just ask admin in the beginning of the year to give a report on the Faith Family Lutheran, Faith Lutheran Family Women and Children Center and how those, that process is going. So I'll just make it short tonight. So thank you very much. I guess we'll go back to Jennifer. Do you have any more in your admin report?
No, I'll, no. We've got one camera tonight as part of that transition to broadcasting. You guys heard that last week, and then we'll just be on YouTube at the beginning of the year. So that was it.
Okay, thank you. And how about our Deputy City Attorney Ramsey Ramerman?
No comments, no executive session tonight. Thank you.
Great. And for those of you attending, I appreciate your patience. Everyone's here is welcome to be part of the process, and we appreciate everyone's passion here tonight. So we'll get moving quickly now. So on to consent items. We have items 1 through 19 minus number 16.
And minus number seven.
Oh, and minus number seven, yeah. Okay. Thank you for that. Do I have a motion?
Councilmember Bader will move the consent items.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Sarango?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number 20. So do we have a presentation tonight?
No, you had the briefing last week, and so you just had the public.
All right. So at this time, before we open the public meeting, is there any questions specific to the ordinance? Comments will be later from council. Is there any questions? Okay. At this time, we'll open the public meeting from item 20, Council Bill 2411-41, Adopt Ordinance Establishing Everett Utility Rates for 2025 through 2028. The third and final reading will be April 8, '25.
Just kidding.
Think, what's that?
Just kidding. January 8.
I'm sorry, January, yeah. Thank you. It's already been a long night. All right. So is there anyone who wish to speak on this?
I have no one signed up to speak on this item.
Is there one here in the audience who'd like to speak on this? Okay. Do I hear a motion to close a public hearing?
Councilmember Bader, so moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Sarango?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay, now we have before us item 20. We'll, I guess we'll do the final reading, and vote will be January 8. Okay, on to item number 21. Is there a presentation?
Yes, we do. First off, our Deputy City Attorney Ramsey Ramerman has a couple of comments to start us off, and then Scott Patterson has a brief PowerPoint.
Okay, so we'll do the presentations and comments, then council questions specifically to the presentation, then we'll open for a public hearing, close a public hearing, and then council comments and motions. Okay?
I just want to remind everyone that the numbers we're going to be hearing tonight are the numbers from the Fiscal Advisory Committee, our preliminary numbers. Tonight's vote is not a commitment to any specific funding or adopting any recommendations for funding. Your action tonight is simply to adopt a resolution, to select the site. It's a step in the development process, which then allows the city staff to move forward with the design, and then, and then and only then will we have the more refined picture of the financial cost of this. So just wanted to remind everyone of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor Franklin, Council President Schwab, council members, Scott Patterson's staff. First of all, I want to thank you for the past year and wish you all happy holidays. I'm sure you've seen plenty of me, and you're ready for a break. So I hope you enjoy your time with your family. Tonight, you have the opportunity to decide whether the Aquasocks will stay in Everett and whether we move forward with a potential addition of professional men's and women's soccer to our entertainment choices, enhancing the quality of life for our residents and providing affordable family fun. As you've already heard, it's important to remember that tonight's decision is selecting a site, allowing us to continue working towards the development of a new entertainment facility for our community. Tonight, we'll be discussing the financial recommendations presented by the Stadium Fiscal Advisory Committee. The figures recommended are currently under review by our finance team, Bond Council, Stafford Sports, a national-recognized sports consultant firm that provides advisory services for public venues. Ben Frans, SOJ, and Dan Ernsty, our Economic Development Director, are with me tonight for a short presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Ben Frans, SOJ, council president, council members, mayor, it's great to see you this evening and really exciting to be here. One more step in a process that you've all been engaged in for quite some time. I have a short presentation. This is really a compliment to the briefing we provided to all of you last week. Want to start here with just a brief refresh on the history. The Aquasocks have been in your community since 1984. In 2021, MLB reconfigured the minor leagues and brought forward a host of additional facility requirements that rendered the existing Funko Field noncompliant for minor league baseball play. The minor leagues have been fining the Aquasocks for their noncompliance for some time now, and we've been working diligently for many years to solve for that problem and ensure that the city of Everett can retain the Aquasocks. In 2022, the city committed to a public-private partnership, studied a remodel of Funko Field, which is the school district-owned site, and studied multiple sites throughout the city, three South Everett sites and two downtown sites. You spent the last two years and over $1 million studying the best two alternatives. That was remodel the existing stadium at Funko Field on school district property or build a new multipurpose facility downtown. Of course, you also have the option of taking no action. You heard comments from Chair Sastrum, who chaired the Stadium Fiscal Advisory Committee, and their recommendation that the downtown site presents the most fiscally beneficial option to the city of Everett. And then tonight, you'll be asked to decide on your preference for site. Just a brief review here. The Funko Field site, owned by the school district, where the Aquasocks have played for many years. First and foremost, appropriately, the priority there is for student athletes, for student sports, and the Aquasocks are a secondary use of that facility. The other alternative, a downtown site bordered by Pacific to the south, Hewitt to the north, Broadway to the west, and the train tracks to the east. We've talked about this over multiple briefings. The final EIS, that environmental impact report, was published earlier this year, and just a couple of highlights from that. Overall, environmental impacts across all alternatives fairly comparable from the school district site to the downtown site to no action. Impact to historic resources equally comparable for the school district site and the downtown site, certainly no new impacts if you take no action. Traffic and noise, if you were to choose the Funko site, a slight increase. Downtown site's really comparable to present, and if you took no action, you'd have a overall reduction in traffic and activity in the city. And lastly, for light pollution, moderate reduction, actually, at Funko Field. This is really a direct result of increase and improvements to field lighting technology. The downtown site would really be comparable, and no action, no significant increase or decrease from current activity. You heard again from Chair Sastrum. Just want to highlight a couple of the Fiscal Advisory Committee recommendations. First, right-size the initial phase to meet current funding. Live within your means. That's a theme that's returned to multiple times in the report and analysis that the Fiscal Advisory Committee conducted over the last year. Maximize private investment. Minimize the city's burden in delivering these assets for the community. And limit funding to revenue bonds and capital funds, primarily those revenue bonds that are supported to the largest extent possible by revenue from the new facility. And then importantly, at this time, the Fiscal Advisory Committee is not recommending any new levies, local improvement district, or tax increases to fund the project. Couple slides here that drill down into the details of that funding recommendation. This first one is for Funko Field, the site owned by the school district. Limited source of, a limited number of funding sources available for that. Include capital improvement funds within the city, state funds, Snohomish County funds, and funds from our private partners. Of course, in the case of Funko Field, that would be limited to the Aquasocks and a lower number than they have committed to publicly for the downtown site at $5 million. Bonds projected from net income, and again, the net income from the Funko Field site is fairly limited, simply for the fundamental reason that the city of Everett does not own that site. The school district will retain ownership and therefore retain the bulk of the revenue potential from that facility. Total potential range of funding between $32 million to $34 million. And preliminary estimates around cost, again, all of the numbers we're sharing here are preliminary around cost, somewhere between $71 to $83 million for a Funko Field renovation. Shifting to the downtown site, a few more funding source options for the downtown site. You have your capital improvement funds, two separate funds for the downtown site. Park impact fees contemplated for the downtown site are some public open space, so park space adjacent to and in with the improved multi-use facility. Of course, the state funds and the county funds that are committed. Private partner funding significantly higher for the downtown site. This is a combination of an increased commitment pledged from the Aquasocks, as well as anticipated investments from the potential partnership with USL, United Soccer League. Also, significantly increased potential revenue from the downtown site, so the potential bond capacity supported by that net revenue of $28 to $48 million. The total funding range to date, $64 million on the low end to $89 million on the high end. Again, preliminary cost estimates, and this is just from some of the napkin sketches that were initially done essentially by the Aquasocks, that those studies that were funded by them, of $102 million to $133 million, including land acquisition costs. So those projected cost numbers for both Funko Field and downtown include potential land acquisition costs. It's important to note that the downtown site could be phased, and again, that loops back to the message, right-size this project. And we're fortunate to be able to use the progressive design build process. We've talked about that over several months as well. That allows us to bring onboard an architect and a contractor simultaneously and drive them to the budget and schedule that we have available and they need to meet. That process, as I shared last week, is going very well, and we look forward to bringing forward a recommendation for a team to you early next year. Question came up last week about closing the gap to funding, and this is included in the Fiscal Advisory Committee report, that we pursue additional public funding at the state level, the county level, and as available at the federal level. We know that the funding package at the federal level at the moment, to keep the government open, is stalled, at least today, but if you read the headlines, you'll note that there was actually funding in there for a football stadium. So the notion that we would go to the, our federal delegation and on the federal level to seek funding for this project is not without precedent. So certainly opportunities there at the federal level. Control costs. This again goes to leveraging that progressive design build process. That is our best chance to meet the budget we have currently in front of us through a phased approach, drive that architect and contractor team together, where as we are developing design, we receive real-time feedback from the market to ensure that we're meeting budget and schedule. And also consider seriously phasing construction of the project. And lastly, add private funding. Be aggressive in our negotiations, ensuring that it's a fair deal for our private partners in this project, as well as ensuring we're keeping the best interests of the city of Everett in mind. And where possible, pursue additional partners that could bring additional capital into the project. I wanted to take a few moments just to talk about the United Soccer League. Who is the USL? How long have they been around? How stable an organization are they? And I'll say at the outset, pretty impressive history. Throughout our country, we've seen many leagues come and go. There've been multiple attempts to unseat the NFL as the premier football league, for example, in this country, and very few of them have succeeded. United Soccer League is a very well-established and very strong league. They started in 1986 with just a small handful of indoor soccer teams. By the mid-'90s, they had grown to about 69, 70 teams nationwide, most of those actually owned by Nike. And in 2008, Nike sold their entire league to the Papadakis family, who owns and runs the USL today. And in 2010, Justin Papadakis and his father Alex merged two soccer leagues into what we know as the United Soccer League today. So a long history, very steady growth, and very strong organization. I mentioned this already, it's led by a father and son, actually very similar to the Aquasocks and the Volpes. The Volpes own three minor league teams across the country, including the Aquasocks. The Papadakis's own the entire USL league. USL now operates seven different properties or groups, ranging from youth leagues to professional development leagues, professional men's teams, and professional women's teams. Just a quick summary here, a snapshot of their organizational footprint across the country. 230 communities, 20,000 players, 4,700-plus events, 95 million fans, 46 pro clubs, 700-plus USL pro matches broadcast annually. You see some of their broadcast partners in ESPN, CBS Sports, Peacock, and Toon here, listed below. 48 nationally broadcast matches. 48 nationally broadcast matches and 13 million unique visitors to their various digital platforms. So a very, fairly robust organization, and I think a good opportunity for the City of Everett to bring us all a partner to the table for the downtown site. Which leads us to the work you have in front of you tonight. Of course, you've been contemplating this for months, conducting due diligence, asking hard questions. We've spent the last two years studying this in depth. Do you remodel an existing facility at the school district site? Or do you build a new facility downtown? And of course, the option of taking no action. Administration and the Stadium Fiscal Advisory Committee recommend a new facility at the downtown site for a host of reasons that we've discussed, and we're here tonight also to answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay, ready for questions? Any questions from council members? Councilmember Vogel.
Just, I, really quickly, does this have parking within it? I know we've had a lot of parking discussion, and I just can't remember off the top of my head if like the parking is within this particular, the more parking, the added parking, the parking that shall be built. Is it within this particular development possible proposal?
Great question, councilmember. It is possible. It will ultimately be dependent on budget and the final design. So the downtown site has more potential for additional parking. There are two locations, one at the northeast corner of the site and one at the southeast corner of the site, that could in its most minimal form be surface parking, and if budget allowed, you could build structured parking there.
I'll try to reframe it later. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Chewie.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Jennifer, for sending out that packet last night. I do have a couple questions. I went through all the information and tried to make sure I wasn't missing anything, but, so I do have a few questions about, first of all, the cost analysis of the construction of both sites. So for the Funko Field, last April, there were two different renovation costs. The first one came in at 39 to 42 million, and the second one was 62 to 72 million range. So that was quite a discrepancy. And the one from the, it was called the Funko Field renovation report, did come with a detailed cost analysis like you would normally see with construction, with everything. I haven't seen any other cost analysis. I was thinking that that would be part of what we were learning about. So there was that large discrepancy last April, and then it came out when the Stadium Fiscal Advisory Committee report, it came out at 68 to 73 million for the Funko Field. So I didn't know if someone could address the discrepancy on those three different numbers.
Absolutely, councilmember. It's a great question. Got some good feedback here. I'll hold on just a second. The cost discrepancy there is really fundamental to the difference between hard cost and soft cost and total project cost. So initially, what you're seeing are only hard cost numbers for Funko Field that don't take into account the soft cost numbers that you roll up into a total project cost. So things like land acquisition, design, permitting fees, taxes, consulting costs, everything that goes into a total project cost. So that's really the fundamental difference there from last spring to what you're seeing now. And this is the discipline that the Fiscal Advisory Committee exercised, both for costs associated with Funko Field and the downtown site, to ensure that you were getting at present the best total potential cost for both those alternatives. So that's, that's the, what's behind that discrepancy. So what you're seeing in that range today of 68 to 70-plus million for Funko Field is a total project cost estimate that captures all of the potential costs the city could incur in delivering that facility, and same for the downtown site.
Difference in detail for the...
Really quick, sorry, to go like right with that, the total projected cost could keep the parking in it, like that has part of the parking, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry to...
Yeah.
No worries.
Councilmember Chewie, go ahead.
The, the second question you did ask was the detail of cost analysis. There is a detailed cost analysis for the downtown site as well, similar to, and this was commissioned by the Aquasocks, so similar to what was done for Funko Field.
Okay, because when I looked at that chart, it looked like there was all the things that would normally be in there with the taxes and the permits and design and everything. So I mean, I didn't make a copy of it, but it just seemed like a lot if that was, you know, 30 million of hard costs or soft costs on top of that. So I don't know. If somebody could look into that and give us a real, a realistic number with all that would be great. And then, and I know, and I want to thank the committee for their work. Fred, thank you guys so much for all that. When I looked at our original proposed action on the committee, I was expecting that we would get a financial pro forma for both sites so that we could then begin to see how that was going to unfold. And I know there was one attached, but it was incomplete, and there was a lot of questions on it. So for me, that's a super important thing for us to look at that. And so I don't know when we can expect that, but for me, that's a very important piece of managing and running and operating these facilities. So I don't know where that is on the queue. I thought it would be coming to us with everything tonight.
Yeah. What you see in the report from the Fiscal Advisory Committee is preliminary pro forma that shows revenue assumptions and operating costs. That was the developed, looking at comparable operating costs for venues across the country as well as regionally. Ultimately, the level of detail and pro forma you're seeking will be developed in the next few months as we're advancing negotiations with our private partners. There's a host of critical financial terms that need to be resolved before you know what the formal net revenue is and also what the formal operating responsibilities would be for the City of Everett at the end of the day in either a renovated or a new facility. We also have one of the nation's experts in public-private sports finance in Stafford Consulting, who is reviewing those terms to provide the best guidance to the city in those negotiations. And then the last component of that will be reviewed by your bond counsel. As the key recommendation from the Fiscal Advisory Committee is that you issue bonds backed by net revenue from either the renovated or new facility, and those numbers will need to be fully vetted and reviewed by third-party experts.
So when, when we do that, can we also have a conversation on how the operating losses will be covered? Because I know when it first opens up, I was sure we would anticipate there would be losses. I think we had that at the Angel of the Winds Arena. And so what does that impact? And I assume that it would be the City of Everett paying for that. And then another item that I have a question on is I don't believe we've looked at the economic impact that we would have by losing, by taking the properties and businesses off the tax rolls, as well as being no tax and sales tax, and then also would be also losing some potential redevelopment, potential that could provide tax base for the City of Everett. So I don't know if we can take a look at that for those properties at least and get an idea of what we will be losing, because we won't be having property tax on this facility.
The assumption is that we'll be working very hard to relocate those businesses within the City of Everett, so the net loss would be, you know, as low as we could possibly make it. But certainly that can be part of future studies as we move forward.
It would just be nice to know what the current tax revenue is from those businesses that we would lose for sure off the top. And that's all I have for right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Bader.
Thanks, Council President Shaw. So recently, we received a letter of concerns from the Downtown Everett Association and from, just from one of the property owners. Obviously, we know about the downtown site. We, I mean, the possibility of downtown site has been well-known for, for months now. And these are, you know, pretty sophisticated folks here, raising their concerns about parking, light rail, terminus, I think housing, other impacts. When they brought those concerns to the Fiscal Advisory Committee, what was their response?
They didn't bring those concerns to the Fiscal Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I think, Councilmember, you're referencing some letters that have recently been received. I think as we reported last week, we've met with Downtown Everett Association and understand, you know, their concerns are really focused, and their comments really focused on the downtown site exclusively, and really projecting out into the future. Assuming that this project was moving forward, you know, what were we going to do to mitigate parking impacts? What were we going to do to ensure that we were collaborating with sound transit? And I may turn it over to Dan Aaronis here to talk about that.
Yeah, thanks. Very good question. And they, those, the Downtown Everett Association letter was just received in the last week, and a lot of the response, the memo that you received yesterday included those concerns in it, and we were responding to you. We wanted this meeting to go forward, and then that letter will be forwarded with a cover letter to the DEA and to the Everett Station District as the two business improvement areas and business associations in the downtown core.
Okay, great, thanks. I have another question I was going to ask about the viability of the USL, but you guys have spoken to that. On the present site, Funko Field, as we look at the cost and revenue projections, is there ways that that could be pared back to meet the expected revenues? Anything that comes to mind that we could do? Obviously, there's a significant gap in both places.
We've had a lot of conversation about that, and certainly you could leverage the progressive design-build process in the same manner for Funko Field. But what we've discovered in our analysis and in discussions with the Aquasocks is that, you know, the Funko Field comes with inherent limits, and there's only so much you'd be able to cut out of that program to reduce the budget there. I mean, you're really looking at being able to do just enough to maintain compliance with MLB requirements. So there is some, but we don't believe there's a lot there that you'd be able to cut.
Similarly, on the downtown site, it seems you're referring to there's a possibility of phasing or something, but, but can we get to the point where the expected revenues you list here or the expenses match? Or is that, are we going to be facing a funding gap several months from now when we get asked to a final approval if we went forward with that site?
The first step here is to, obviously tonight, make a site selection, and following that, we'll bring forward a recommendation for the progressive design-build team. And their first charge will be to design a project either in phases or in a single phase that meets the available funding we have identified. That will be their first charge. And so I, I'm not trying to dodge your question, I'm just saying, there's a very deliberate process to arrive at that answer, and that's the team we need to have in place to provide those answers and say, can we deliver a facility within this budget? If not, please tell us what that gap is, and so you are fully informed and understand what decisions you need to make at that time.
And, and I fully appreciate the comment you make about at this time, the Fiscal Advisory Committee is not recommending new levies, local improvement, tax increases. And I just want to say, I guess, I, I would not be supportive of, if we just were to decide for the downtown site, of coming back and going, oh, you know, maybe we need those after all. So just wanted to put that on the record, that you've got to get there with the existing revenues if we go to the downtown site, or even Funko Field. So anyhow, thanks for me, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Ryan?
Great. Go down the road.
Yeah?
Thank you, and thank you to Jennifer and staff too for all the work to put those lengthy memos together this week. I read them diligently, so thank you for your hard work on that. My only remaining question was, just curious if the downtown site has any historically or culturally significant areas that we need to be aware of or careful of?
The environmental impact statement identified properties both by the Funko Field site and the downtown site that could qualify as historic assets. None of them registered as such.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Arlingo.
Well, certainly, costs and revenue are central to this, and I'm always interested in these kinds of things when there is a, a third party with no other skin in the game who's going to be analyzing these things. So I want to clarify, if I understand this, before we move forward, we would understand from the potential bond buyers what they're interested in in assurances and whether we have done enough to give them comfort for a reasonable interest rate. Okay.
Yes, you'll have several levels of independent expert analysis, one with nationally respected experts on public-private financing for stadium facilities, sports facilities specifically, and then independent of that, expert bond counsel that will conduct that analysis and ensure that whatever package you're bringing to market is viable.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fossey, would you? Miss, Councilmember Vogel's already had her chance, we'll go back to her in a second.
I was going to comment that I took that chance already. I don't have questions, I think, given that we were on the...
Yeah, just question.
Committee, yeah, so.
Okay, we'll do comments later.
Okay, thank you. I have a few. One thing I'd like you to address is this gap analysis. Before us, we have two, and I know tonight isn't about the dollars per se, but it's affected, the sites do affect the ability to generate enough revenue to complete this project. So could you compare the two sites and the ability to fill in this gap? Because I know, obviously, one site, it's less expensive, but there may be more challenges to fill in the gap versus one that's more expensive but more ability to fill in that funding gap. So could, if you could add some more detail about that.
Absolutely, Council President. So I backed up to the slides that summarize the various funding sources. This one is for Funko Field and potential funding identified of 32 to 34 million. Reduced number of potential capital fund sources from the City of Everett. And in either instance, Funko Field and downtown, that's a fairly low number coming from capital improvements. Again, one of the priorities Fiscal Advisory Committee established was that any funds put towards this project don't adversely impact the delivery of core services elsewhere in the city. So a more limited bucket of potential funds there. State funds and Snohomish County funds are the same, much lower capital investment from the Aquasocks as the sole private partner in Funko Field. And then this gets to your question here, this projection of bonds from net income. The potential net revenue that the City of Everett can realize from Funko Field is really limited to two categories. One, a limited number of additional special events you could host and manage throughout the year when there's not youth or student athlete activities or Aquasocks activities. And then parking, there's a limited number of surface parking spaces owned and controlled by the school district. You would have to enter into a third-party agreement with the school district to have the right to charge for parking from those surface lots and retain that revenue. So a very limited number of sources for potential revenue for the Funko Field site. Of course, the Funko Field site does not accommodate a soccer field, so you don't have that potential opportunity, nor is there any space around Funko Field that could be developed or inspired, you know, developers inspired by the investment you're making in the facility. To review again, the downtown site, additional capital sources of funding, the biggest change here is you have the opportunity to realize some public park space along with the delivery of the new multipurpose facility in downtown. Same amount at present for the state and the county, although the Fiscal Advisory Committee recommendation urges you and encourages you to return to the county and the state as well as potential federal funding to fill that gap. A significant increase in the potential contribution from the private partners, because this brings to the table the possibility of United Soccer League with both a professional men's and women's team, and a significant investment... men's and women's team and a significant investment of upfront capital commensurate with that. And then the net revenue potential is significantly higher from the downtown facility. The city of Everett would own that facility. You would manage and control that facility. You would have total control of events outside of those that are managed by either baseball or soccer. And that affords you far more opportunity to recapture those revenues. And there's also the potential for additional partners in that downtown site in future phases. And that would represent another path to potential revenue for the city.
Yeah, and then my second question, obviously, today's a commitment to a site and a path. And there is going to, there is a, there is an action item to, for an additional cost for consulting fees. Our next round of considerations will be end of January, is that correct?
Correct.
Will we have a better idea if we go with the downtown site on what our USL commitment might be for other private investors?
I would anticipate by the end of January that we are further along in negotiations with potential partners. And so, yes, would have a clearer idea of both revenue potential and upfront capital investment.
If USL decides to back out by January, we can switch sites?
It's a good question. You would certainly have that opportunity because we would not have released the progressive design-build team at that time. So, yes, that is correct.
And I just want to jump in, too. So in January, your decision will be to hire the progressive design-build team. That still is not the decision to spend 70 million or 100 million to build a stadium. That decision comes towards the end of the year.
Correct.
After they've designed and, and set and finalized that budget and we've finalized negotiations. So I don't want council to think that in January, all the information is going to be readily available because it takes a long time to, to design this. So again, then in January, that first decision will be to spend a few million dollars, probably $4 million-ish, to design and, and release the progressive design-build team to do that work and our team to do the financial analysis. And then once that work is complete and they've fully designed the stadium, at the end of that time, that decision is when this council has the big decision of voting to move forward and spend all of those different revenue sources on a new stadium.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
One more, thanks, Council President. So on either site, if we choose either, what are we going to be spending before we make a final decision? Is it like minimal on Funko and a bunch on downtown? Or can you give us some?
That's actually a great question. You, you're going to spend about the same amount on either site in the pre-development costs, design, bringing that contractor onboard, any environmental assessment that would need to be done. You know, it's, it's going to be fairly comparable.
Thank you. Okay, seeing other questions, is there any more in the presentation? Okay, thank you. At this point, then, we'll open for public comment. Angie, do you have a few people, maybe?
And we're opening the public hearing?
Yes, public hearing, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, public hearing, thank you.
Yes, so first, we'll start with Mark Nysether. If you could please come to the podium. And please state your full name and city of residence. And you have been given five minutes to speak.
Thank you. Mark Nysether, Marysville, Washington. Good evening. Our company, Hewitt Overpass LLC, owns three buildings on Hewitt between Broadway and the railroad tracks that we purchased in early 1980s. They total about 45,000 square feet of floor space. And we also own a small 2,500-square-foot lot on Hewitt that is adjacent to a building next to ours. As I said, we've owned them for about 45 years. With our buildings on Smith Street that we own under a separate company, we are now using about 50% of the building's space at Hewitt for storage of inventory, equipment, pallets, trucks, forklifts, and other warehouse-related items. We have one outside tenant that occupies 25% of the space. The proposed stadium design that we have seen eliminates our access from McDougal Street and attempts to replace it with alley access. You cannot drive a 40-foot semi down that alley. You can barely get a pickup down it. Without suitable access to these buildings, we will not be able to use or will anybody else. Earlier today, I counted 70 city-marked-out parking spots within the proposed stadium area. There are another 30 unmarked spaces where there's no curbs or sidewalks and people just kind of park where they want on city property. The Agnew Building, which if you're familiar with it, which is right next to the overpass, their parking lot has 27 dedicated parking spots to serve their building. All of those parking spots are gone according to the design that I've seen. So that's about 127 parking spots that will go away. When there are hockey games, concerts, high school graduations, or numerous other events in the arena, all of those spots can be full of vehicles as well as all the side streets around the arena. Where is everybody going to park when there is a baseball game and a graduation ceremony at the same time? I'm not opposed to the site. I'm not necessarily, I actually like the idea of it. All I'm saying is, is I don't think they have thought out what they're going to do with the business owners that are on Hewitt and on Broadway that haven't had their properties taken. How are we going to get to them? And the one other comment I wanted to make about the buildings, when you were asking about historic buildings, the nicest building in that whole area is the Agnew Hardware Building. It's about a five-story brick building. It's very well-maintained. The last thing I'd like to do is see that thing go away. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, if Nathaniel could please come to the podium. Nathaniel? Okay, we'll move on to Tammy. Please state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Tammy Dunn, my residence is in Snohomish, but I do work in Everett. And I am the Executive Director of the Snohomish County Sports Commission. And I'd like to say good evening, Council President Schwab, council members, and Mayor Franklin. First, I would like to say thank you. Thank you to the Stadium Fiscal Advisory Committee for their due diligence this last year. Also, thank you to you, city council members, for your due diligence this last year as well. This is a big decision, and it affects, I think, as Fred said, more than just the Everett community. Many people have talked about economic impact tonight, about their love of baseball. I'm going to talk about the opportunity of more sports and the community. We're in the sports tourism, but my organization is also very involved in the community and making sure that kids have a place to play sports and access to that. And last week, when I was here, when I heard that USL had the potential of coming here and they were looking at a different location or other sites for more soccer fields, basically multipurpose sports fields, that excites me because it allows kids to play, gives them the access, gives the adults. That goes beyond the tourism-related aspects, goes back to the quality of life, healthy, active lifestyles, get the kids laughing, having fun, and being able to play, being able to give donations to, like, Connect Casino Road, which several of us did, and be part of that, and see the joy on these kids where they're getting soccer balls or baseball bats. It just, it means a lot to be able to have these kids to be able to do that. And as I always say, sports is community and community is sports. They go hand in hand. It's about, again, it's about the quality of life, healthy lifestyles. It's about people being able to be volunteer, be volunteer coaches and teach these kids life skills. Also, you know, I can envision USL soccer, organizing soccer camps, and then also these kids being able to go on a field that's a practice field, field turf, and being able to play in the rain, be able to play any time of the year. And that's really valuable. And there are so many different locations to be able to do that. And then this, the excitement of the World Cup coming in Seattle in 2026. There's just a lot of different excitement and just being able to play sports. And I can talk for hours about sports, about youth, about playing sports, laughing, and having fun. And I can also have, I could talk for hours also about sports and how sports positively impact the economy of the community. I'm not from this community, but I love this community because it reminds me of my home. So anyway, I'll close at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, if Nathaniel could please come to the podium. State your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time and appreciate your patience with the delay. I was watching the live stream and apparently we're 45 seconds behind. So I appreciate your patience and let me come back in the future. Good evening, council members. My name is Nathaniel Ingean. I'm a, I'm a United States Air Force veteran, a proud Everett resident, and the founder of Black Forest Mushrooms, located at the corner of Hewitt and Broadway and the northwest corner of the proposed Site Two. At Black Forest Mushrooms, we cultivate gourmet mushrooms and healthy communities. As one of the largest controlled environment agricultural mushroom farms in the Pacific Northwest, we're proud to be a part of Everett's vibrant community and contribute to its economic growth. To date, we have created 20 brand-new jobs to our community. I understand the decision before the Everett City Council tonight is a significant one for our city. As an organization dedicated to cultivating healthy communities, Black Forest Mushrooms is excited to support efforts to strengthen Everett's economic vitality. No matter which location the council selects this evening, our team of rangers at Black Forest Mushrooms looks forward to partnering with the city of Everett to ensure our community remains at the center of our growth. Thank you for your time and for all that you're doing to grow our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, if Fred could please come to the podium. Yep, you go ahead. Be careful. Please state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, my name's Fred Plappert. I'm from the Delta Neighborhood Association. And I would like consultants to come around to all our neighborhood association meetings and speak about the site. So that you can get more of representation. And I used to deal with facilities in college. And one thing I would like to see is grass instead of artificial turf. You know, the downtown site, I see it as an economic boom string. Because upon, upon long, when the Aquasocks are on the road, you can have a concert or a soccer game. You know, think about the revenue streams that you can bring in to a concert. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, if Grant could please come to the podium. And please state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
I am Grant Harrington. City, I live in Everett. What else did you need from me?
That was it.
That's it? That's all you needed? Okay, I'm out. No, I'm kidding. Oh, where do I start? First thing is, nobody wants to see the Aquasocks go. Nobody wants to see the Aquasocks leave. Okay, we don't. But you also can't, you can't fix a Honda with Lamborghini handbook. Okay? So we have to live in reality. Okay? We have to understand, the public has to understand these bonds that they're talking about selling. What happens if the revenue from the stadium doesn't pay for those bonds? Where does that money come from? We have to make sure that the public understands all this stuff. Okay? We have to make sure that, you know, the, the big thing I hear is, is what about us? What about us that live here in Everett? You know what? We, we talk about a minor league baseball team, we're talking about a minor league soccer team. You know what? You know what our minor league baseball and soccer teams and football teams and stuff should be? Cascade High School, Everett High School, Everett Youth Soccer. Okay? We don't have a solid youth sports program or youth sports facilities here in the city of Everett right now. Multi-use sports facility. How do we parlay this stadium or what we're wanting to build into things that get people that want to move to Everett, not visit Everett? Are there ways that we can incorporate, like, we, you, the city of Everett owns so much more property than anybody in this room really even knows. You have 84 acres down off Lowell Laramie Road. Can we, have we, have we looked at parlaying, including a youth, youth sports project or youth sports into this project? Have we really looked into how this impacts when the school board goes to try to sell bonds next year, in 20, not next year, the year after, 2026? Okay? Like, we only have a 47% owner-occupied homeownership rate here in the city of Everett. And we need to, if we're going to invest or we're going to find, if we're going to give this amount of effort of time, energy, money, resources into something like this, how do we make sure it does things to create, want people to move to Everett and not visit Everett? To, you know, the first thing most people do when they go to buy a house in an area is they, they go drive around the schools, they drive around the facilities of the schools. Okay, I'll try to be quick, but it's not going to happen.
Please finish up.
Okay. My hopes are a couple of things. One, we proceed with caution. We understand that, you know what, I may want a mansion on Grand Avenue, but I can't afford it. So let's, let's deal with what we can afford. Let's not spend another $2 million. We already spent $1 million.
We need you to finish up.
Okay, we already spent $1 million just to get to here. Let's not spend another $2 million to get to somewhere and then have to turn back.
Okay. And lastly, thank you. Lastly, next year.
Thank you. In the name of fairness, we'd have to ask you to sit, please.
Can we bring this energy and we're trying to raise money for our kids?
In the name of fairness, would you please sit down? Thank you.
You guys have 18 months.
If Pete could please come to the podium. And please state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Pete Psychov, I live in Everett, Washington. There's a lot of work that's been done by lots of people. And certainly, I want to make sure that I thank the mayor for the leadership to make sure that the Aquasocks stay in town. I think that most people do indeed want that. And then there's the details, and there's a lot of details. I won't talk about too many different little issues, but when I go to an Aquasocks game and I drive there, there's a lot of parking. And I heard it said earlier that only 18% of the people that go to the game are from Everett. And that lots of those people who aren't from Everett, who come to the game, are not only just from Snohomish County, but even farther away. So they're driving to get here, is what. So, they're driving to get here, is what they're doing. For the most part, I would speculate. And we're talking about where will parking be? I've heard the question asked, where will parking be? I think it's recognized that if the projection of about 4,000 people show up to an Aqua Sox game, they're going to have to park somewhere. And I don't think that's been fully addressed quite yet. But I think it ought to be taken quite seriously. We have the arena, and when there's a big event, parking in all the streets downtown fill up. And that is good for certain businesses that might be related to what kind of event is going on. But a lot of other businesses, for them, it means that people who tried to get to their business couldn't park. Because there's not enough parking really for everybody to do everything at the moment, let alone build another large facility with people coming from all over and not taking some parking into account. I'd really highly recommend that that be considered. Those are the main things related to baseball. I've supported the pallet shelter concept. I own property in town, and when the tax bill came from the county, most recently, on average, over the various properties that I own, it was 30% higher. That's a big jump. Nonetheless, I voted for the new, for the recent city proposal to raise the city portion of the tax. Because if we're going to have a good city, someone's got to pay for it. Otherwise, we're cutting back $12 million from the budget. And that means people are suffering. We've already heard from people who are suffering, we don't have enough funds to take care of them. So, we have a few problems. I am so appreciative that you have given your time to focus your attention on these problems.
Thank you. Next, if Anthony can please come to the podium. And please state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes.
Anthony Jansen Edmonds. Mayor Franklin, council members first. Thanks for getting the TV going for us in the lobby. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Gorlick family, owners of the 2201 Pacific Avenue site that lies within the boundaries of the proposed downtown site. Gorlick family has roots in the Everett community going back to the '70s, where they developed the adjacent site on McDougal for a distribution center to support their HVA distribution business, Thrifty Supply. Wanted to come here and just state that the family is a very excited proponent of the downtown location and looks forward to working with stakeholders in an effort to make this new stadium a reality for the city of Everett. This project will secure the Aqua Sox' long-term future, provide the opportunity to bring men's and women's pro soccer, and create a regional entertainment district to be enjoyed by the community and its neighbors, both near and far, like myself and Edmonds. Also, it's a sound assumption that this investment will spur adjacent development activity and something that I suggest be considered relatively soon. In closing, council members, thank you for your time and consideration of this incredible opportunity for the city of Everett. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comments.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward that hasn't signed up? This is open. Okay?
Council President.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to make one comment in response to one of the speakers regarding youth.
Could we wait till after the public hearing is closed? Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
Do you need a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
I move to close the public hearing.
Councilor Ryan seconds.
Okay. Motion and second's been made. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Serlango?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to share, I don't, I'm sure we've mentioned it at some point, but one of the ways that the downtown site would actually support youth sports is that by having two stadiums within the city, it encourages youth sporting tournaments. Right now, we can have limited youth sporting events because we have a single stadium. Once you have two stadiums, that actually becomes a real opportunity for the city. It's something that our school district and our neighboring school district would benefit from because both stadiums would be able to host multiple youth sporting events and bring youth from near and far, all around the state to play and enjoy sports in both of our stadiums. So, I just wanted to add that, that the Aqua Sox, the new downtown Aqua Sox stadium would actually help youth sports as well. Thank you.
I had one other question that came up in the thought process, and there was some, could you address, I know you've addressed it before, and that is potential loss of revenue from the school district? My understanding is it's, the school district's limited on the revenue they can generate from projects. So, if you could address that. Some, a lot of our residents are concerned that somehow it would be a big loss to the school.
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you for asking that, Council President Schwab. We've had ongoing conversations with the school district. They've been a great partner, not only during this process, but for decades with the Aqua Sox, and they've been great partners, and they're committed to, if the school district remodel site is selected and moves forward, they will provide an equal amount of ability to fund that. However, as far as financial, they don't see the Aqua Sox being at their school district stadium site as a financial plus or minus. If the Aqua Sox leave, it's a wash, basically, with their operational costs. So, that's a, it's a great question. They've been fantastic partners in this process. One thing that you're not asking right now, I just feel like I need to point out too, is for those who are interested in parking, the environmental impacts statement process covered exhaustively. And there are roughly about 2,800 parking stalls available for events downtown and about 600-plus on the school district site. Part of the thing that we believe is that locating close to a light rail station, especially for those who visit us from outside the city for concerts, as well as for baseball games and so forth, will find that extremely convenient at the downtown site. Thank you.
Thank you. So, for, do we have any questions for presentation? Councilmember Toohey?
Just to follow up on that, I'm just curious, we haven't heard anything from the school district on what they think about all this?
I was just, I was racking my brain to think if we had formally heard anything. They have, like I said, we've been meeting as a staff team with their staff team on a regular basis, and Scott Patterson, I'm going to hand off to him.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything in quite some time. Just curious.
Councilmember Toohey, I actually asked that direct question to Carolyn Mason, school board member, and she said, in a quote, "It would be a zero net loss to us, as Dan has already stated." And actually, when Tammy Dunn spoke, she talked about additional tournaments. We actually forecast that they would probably generate more revenue going forward as having a second stadium within eight blocks of a downtown site. And the options of having tournaments and other multi-use stadium uses would create revenue for them going forward that they don't have now.
So, and Carolyn Mason served on the fiscal advisory committee. The school district hasn't weighed in in support of, they've said, they've expressed their strong willingness to partner, and that remains whether we continue with remodel of their site or a new. I think they're just enthusiastic about the partnership with us. That's what Superintendent Saltzman has expressed to me and what Carolyn has expressed to the team.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Ryan?
Thanks. Speaking of youth involvement, I just wanted to take the opportunity to plug again my suggestion about looking into the model that the Urban Youth Academy that the Kansas City Royals have with their minor league team to serve underserved youth with sports mentorship and partnerships, and they partner with the, it could be a partnership with the charitable arm of the Mariners, the Mariners Cares charity, and there could also be funding available as well for operations or for the capital project itself as well. So, just wanted to take, didn't want to miss that opportunity to plug that again. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Vogely?
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption earlier. A lot of my questions have to do with money, and so we're not there yet, but since we're talking about parking a little bit, and I know that in two of the three options, CIP four money is being utilized, I think it's $900,000. I know that we don't have a whole lot in there, so it's a minimal amount of money for what we're talking about overall. But my question is, since everybody's talking about parking and we have a certain amount of stalls, and I know that with the parking presentation and paperwork that has come before us that isn't about the stadium, my question is, when Everett inevitably goes to paid on-street parking, because I'm sure that we will, would that funding for that capital improvement come from a CIP four? And the reason I am asking is because there's not much money in there, not much money revenue goes towards that, so I'm just thinking about utilizing that particular fund, and will the stadium affect that down the road?
I actually can answer that. Councilmember Vogely, thank you. You're talking about the capital investment to actually build the infrastructure that allows on-street paid parking, and I don't want to go down too deep of a rabbit hole, but already it was mentioned that sometimes businesses that are open late, the stalls on-street get filled up during the Silver Tip game. A Silver Tip game is about 5,000-plus attendees, the Aqua Sox average half of that. So, it will still be an impact. That problem will still be there for concerts, all sorts of different things, unless we go to something like on-street paid parking. That's been the consistent recommendation of parking consultants that we've hired over the past 20 years to look at downtown sites. We have a fund that is specifically designated for downtown parking encouragement that is the, also the reserve fund for the Everett Park Garage. Since we own that asset, it is now a, I wouldn't call it a cash cow, but maybe a cash piglet or something like that, in generating enough revenue positive that there's enough money to tap for those on-street parking. So, that actually is something we have a fund already designated for.
Fantastic. I'm glad we could have that dialogue.
Okay. Thank you. So, any further questions? Do I hear a motion? Oh, after a motion, yeah. How about a motion and a second to get a comment going?
I'll go ahead and move that the council adopt item number 21, a resolution securing the downtown and alternative as the location for the proposed Everett Outdoor Multipurpose Facility Project.
Councilmember Ryan seconds.
Okay, have a motion and second's been made. Comments? Councilmember Toohey?
Okay. Well, first, I don't think anybody wants the Aqua Sox to go away, and that's not ever been any communication I've had from any of, anyone on the dais and people I talk to. But it is a very emotional issue for many of us, and as elected officials, we need to make sure that we are balancing our decisions between emotions and our fiduciary responsibilities to the people of Everett. I support baseball, and this decision is not just about keeping the Aqua Sox, but ensuring that we build a future that is financially sustainable, equitable, and aligned with the needs of the Aqua Sox teams and our entire community. I understand the enthusiasm for our downtown stadium. Its supporters point to potential economic development, increased tourism, and a vibrant community hub. However, there are studies of similar projects that do show that sometimes these benefits are overstated, and that sometimes these stadiums can end up as a significant debt to the community, to the city. So, we need to be really mindful of that as we move forward. We're being asked tonight to decide with what I believe that we're, and we are spending our personal, as if we are spending our personal dollars, and how much information do we need to spend a lot of our money? And I do have some reservations because I was under the assumption that we would be getting more financial information to make this decision, from cost-benefit analysis, financial performa, and the cost analysis of the construction of both sites. So, I do have reservations making a decision tonight, so I'll be honest. I would feel a lot more comfortable if I had more of this to help make this right decision. I do think that the downtown site, we need to be really mindful of the neighborhood and those that, businesses that are left after, if it all happens. I think the parking is a huge issue, and we hear it over and over again. The parking study says we have plenty of parking, but when you're trying to find a spot or you're trying to have your business, it's a problem. So, I think we need to be really smart about that, and this project should include that. And I'm hoping that in January, we'll see some of the numbers that I'm really wanting to have. And I guess that's, anyway, that's all I have for right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Bader?
Thanks, Council President. I want to say, I appreciate all the public comment we got over the last few weeks, both Pearl and Khan, but I think, and the enthusiasm, but kind of like echoing words of Councilmember Toohey, my decision comes down to numbers and looking at those numbers. Certainly feel, like almost everyone's voice, we need to keep the Aqua Sox, they bring both tangible and intangible benefits to our community. I think they're worth the cost, and right now, time's of the essence, so we've got to move forward. Otherwise, I think MLB is going to move on. As earlier stated, whichever option we choose, despite some misunderstanding in the community, this won't impact the city's operations budget. So, we've heard that many times. Well, like, we'll take funds from our capital improvement, capital improvement funds, it won't affect, it doesn't take money away from the day-to-day operations like library or parks. Either option we choose, present location remodel or new field downtown requires us to find additional revenue, and I think there are risks at both sites. And money needs to be spent to go forward, no matter which site we go with. It seems to me, though, we have a better chance of funding the additional revenue with the downtown option. I don't see how options for closing the funding gap materialize with remodeling the present location. Somewhat frustratingly, I think it's kind of a chicken-and-egg scenario. We have to spend more money to find out more, to feel more solid about this. So, that is frustrating to me, but I realize that's the way, the way things operate in terms of building and exploring options. I'd note the committee that advises us and studied this for many months has unanimously recommended the downtown option. While I recognize choosing the downtown option means we'll spend some money if we, even if we find out there's some insurmountable problems, there are several off-ramps in the next few months before we irrevocably commit to the downtown option. I hope and expect, as we move forward in the next months, studying and planning, that by the time we get to that last off-ramp, that the gap between funding and expense will be closed. And lastly, I can say that, you know, about two-plus decades ago, I recall I was, and I wasn't on council then, but I was skeptical of the arena and the event center, and probably, at least, I think I might have spoke out against it, certainly not here, but I'd say from the perspective now, two decades later, despite the cost, I think this has been, that has been a net positive for the community. And for all those reasons, my vote will be here in a few minutes to support the downtown option.
Councilmember Ryan?
Great, thank you. Thank you to the staff that have gotten us to this decision point. I know it's been a lot of work, and thank you too to the public who have written in and joined for public comment to help us weigh in on this decision as well. We definitely hear you. And while there's a lot to continue considering and still a number of uncertainties that are left to iron out, one thing is certain. We should continue to explore how we can keep the Everett Aqua Sox as our home team and open the doors to a new local sports partner, the United Soccer League. And we should do so at a site that benefits partner, the United Soccer League. And we should do so at a site that benefits our city the most, which is downtown. Knowing that today's vote isn't committing any additional dollars at this time, and that there are a number of off-ramps coming up where we can step back from the plate, if things aren't lining up, I'm comfortable with voting yes today to narrow the scope of study and analysis to the downtown site. This yes vote comes with a set of expectations. I expect that further analysis and presentations will provide better concrete numbers, including more precise commitments from private investors. I expect that parking concerns will be clearly and thoroughly addressed. I expect that there will be a robust stakeholder engagement process, including not just the surrounding business owners and building owners and organizations, but also the tenants and organizations that currently utilize Angel of the Winds. This is to ensure the mitigation of any unintended consequences. And last, I expect that the public will be provided with ample opportunities to weigh in on elements they would like to see included. Continuing to explore the possibility of a new multipurpose stadium is an important step toward creating new opportunities for Everett and the economic benefits that could come with it, and we should absolutely continue exploring what could be a game changer for our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Zethink.
Well, thank you. As with Councilmember Ryan, I want to thank the commenters, staff, and the Stadium Fiscal Advisory Committee, especially also staff and O-City staff during this very stressful and cost-cutting time, has been spending a lot of time on this. This is really important. Also, I'd like to thank the other council members who've been spending time looking into this, because they give different perspectives than I have. The diversity in their experiences, in their background knowledge, in their focuses, in their individual perspectives has been really helpful, and I think really important, because this sort of, what seems to some as kind of slow and careful, is important when we're making choices that are going to affect us for a very long time. Of course, as has been said, this vote doesn't commit us to building a stadium, but it narrows the site selection, and we're, as Councilmember Bader said, in a kind of a chicken-and-egg situation where we have to either move forward or abandon this entirely. And it's, we advance far enough to see if we are justified in spending that next-gen commitment of money. I do appreciate the charm in the economy in the school district site, and I really appreciate the flexibility they've shown with the Aqua Sox in working out schedules. Though, the term remodel has often been used for the school district site, but as I look at that, changing the orientation and pretty much rebuilding that site, this is not so much a remodel as it is a reconstruction. And that's probably generally a summary of why it costs this similar kind of amount for a totally new stadium. One concern I have about the school district site that has leaned me toward consideration, and probably others as well, of the downtown site, is that the school district site and that rebuild would mean losing at least a season or more of local games, both Aqua Sox and others. And continuity and habits are an important factor in terms of attendance success on a sustained basis. If people get out of the habit of going, they will find other things that will occupy their time and their lives, other teams, other activities. So that's a factor for me as well, and that's really what I'm trying to do here without duplicating other comments, is summarizing the things behind my decision. Also, the downtown site could add a park and recreation resource downtown where we otherwise don't have much. That's a kind of an underserved area that way, and a little bit of the if-you-build-it-they'll-come. I've heard a lot about USL soccer and a commitment to add the men's and women's teams. We talked about that. To me, that's one of the critical elements here, and I think without that, there's no way I could see us pushing forward, seeing enough confidence that we'd have enough revenue to make this go. And of course, I asked the question earlier about the revenue bonds that would support this. I think we need to, we should explain to our community members that a revenue bond is a bond that's sold, that's specifically paid back by revenues from the thing that the bond financed. So there's a kind of a circular process there, kind of a healthy one, I think. That's why I asked the question about the gimlet-eyed, green-eye-shade folks who will look at those bonds and price them appropriately. And I know there is another team that has sold some bonds that are probably a lot more risky for this kind of thing, that are a lot higher rates. So I think that's, that'll be a critical element for us as well. Again, other eyes other than ours, and ones who are pretty harsh, pretty cold-eyed in looking at these numbers. Quick note about eventual synergy with light rail. I've served for a couple of years on the elected leadership group for the Everett Link Extension of Light Rail. That's the 16 miles, the biggest extension of light rail to come from Lynwood here to Everett, though that's going to be quite some way down the road. But I've walked the area multiple times with other elected officials, Sound Transit and their former CEO. So I think they understand what this is. They're experts in concrete and steel, and I suspect that if we go forward with this on the downtown site, they will need to do some adjustments. But that process for environmental impact and early design is underway right now for those three options, for those station and track, station locations and track alignments, along with the tail track that goes on further. So I'm comfortable that that kind of thing has been carefully looked at, that we've, and of course, this advisory group is to the Sound Transit Board, of which our mayor is a member. I'm also careful about actions, any actions government to acquire property from private owners. Really, I'm reluctant to do it unless it's needed. We should work and have worked, I think, to minimize the area needed, indeed compared to some earlier plans. The plans now, in terms of needed land, are smaller. And of course, those owners will be paid market value for their property, and there are in the law some relocation resources for that. And of course, with respect to things like Black Forest mushrooms, an innovative and creative, real value add to the community, then I hope that helps us keep that business and other businesses here in town. I'm certainly behind that. Although, you know, along with this, I respect skepticism and even cynical attitudes toward government spending. I think it's been reflected in recent votes, certainly in the press. And some studies, many and a few have been mentioned tonight, suggest a very limited return when municipalities provide all or the vast majority of funding for sports facilities like stadiums. There's even a website focused on this. You can contact me if you want to see it. But again, that perspective, like the ones of other people here in the council, and the ones I've heard from the public, have been really helpful to me. But a factor here, countering that, countering that, working with that, is that we are leveraging funding from others. That this is one where the city's funding is leveraged something like seven to one other funding. That gets other people with skin in the game. That gets commitments from them. It reduces the risk and the investment the city has to have. And once again, without that, I don't think I could support this at any of the sites. Also, progressive design-build is a factor in my choices about this. You know, the traditional process of design then bid is intended to preserve or protect the public interest and the public purse. It sometimes doesn't do that very well on large, complicated projects, because you design without the input, without the insight from the people who will actually build it. It is a much more complicated thing, but when the city has effectively used the design-build, the progressive design-build process, and I think what that, the constructors involved help us, help the designers with the trade-offs, and those trade-offs are often cost-related. They're sometimes schedule-related. But when you don't do that, that's when you end up, I think, with projects that go too long and cost too much, and put the public in a bind where you either abandon a project or have to keep forking out more money. And that's really something I think that all of us are trying to avoid. So I think in that sense, some of the other protections are better in this process, but what it does mean is we need to invest more upfront. But I think down the road, years down the road, if we proceed with this, that's exactly what we'll be glad we did and something we should do. Let's see. One of the thing coming with this potentially is a building of some, of a practice field or fields in the Casino Road area there at the Walter Hall, near Walter Hall. That's a public benefit, and it also would help some of our more disadvantaged communities have places for recreation and bring them into sports that may help them in the rest of their lives. And then lastly, with respect to youth sports and tournaments, I had a personal experience in Pueblo, Colorado this spring, coming into a hotel where a town, Pueblo, was hosting a baseball tournament. And at that hotel and in the restaurants, there was a lot of money being spent. It was a couple of nights with student athletes, with their parents and friends, and a lot going on that way. Now, hard for me to know how much of that will happen in this case, but I think the leverage of adding another facility, if we can get more tournaments here, adds multiple of those days in the year that help us pay off those revenue bonds and support the stadium. So those are the kind of the factors behind me. I'm sorry to go on so long, but this is the one time to do it.
Councilmember Vogel.
Thank you. Thank you all for supporting future memories and good times. I see you and I hear you. Tonight's about site selection, so there's going to be plenty more time for us to talk about money and all of the other things. I would like to read something from a memo, and it says, "Selecting the downtown site advances Everett's long-term commitment of investing in a vibrant downtown core. The city leaders who have served Everett as city council members historically have been champions of exceptional capital investments that enhance the downtown core, because they have understood that a vibrant downtown will disproportionately benefit the entire city and region." City-led initiatives and capital investments to improve the Everett's downtown include nine items that I'm not going to read, but they're really great things. "These investments continue to yield dividends for the city of Everett and Son Homeish County. They make historic downtown Everett a special place, a wonderful place to live and work, to invest, to build businesses that provide jobs, to shop and dine, and to enjoy events, art, and culture. For the reasons provided, the administration recommends that council invest in a vibrant downtown by advancing this project and by selecting the downtown site for the multipurpose facility," end quote. So those weren't my words, but they're really good, and you can see that city council members have for eons really encouraged wonderful vitality. And you will also be able to understand that the mayor can accomplish her goals if she just sets her mind and her staff to it, and I think that she is going to get that tonight. So, thank you, and you're welcome.
Councilmember Fossey.
Okay. So I wanted to concur with so many of my colleagues on the many wonderful suggestions and points that you have made. I have very, very much enjoyed being on the Fiscal Advisory Committee, and I wanted to start off by saying, you know, thanks to the school district. I've heard nothing but amazing things on what great partners they have been with Aqua Sox in that whole entire process. So nothing of this is reflective on that. Love you, Everett School District. Okay. So we're looking at like the fiscally beneficial, and going through this whole process and all the evaluations that were presented, I was very impressed with the advisory committee and all the answers that you gave to the numerous questions in depth, all the data that was provided, all the work being done. It was excellent. I feel very, very satisfied in my resolve that what I'm going to be voting for is, would definitely be pursuing more options with the downtown site. The fiscal beneficial aspect of it just makes so much more sense. I think that there is a lot of more things that we have to still be mindful of and take into consideration, but a lot of those things are also going to be in future steps, not at this juncture right now. I don't see without the USL, like, how the revenue just wouldn't be there in having it in the other site. So for the city's sake, and for us not wanting to increase taxes, which was a priority, in that we're not impacting the general fund and not putting the burden on our community, I just see how the downtown site is the way to do that, because we are able to now have three teams, being able to, from the very start, generate revenue. There was a question about the footprint and the access and the alleys, and I had heard a question similar to that previously, where I think the answer, and you may want to correct me if I'm not answering it correctly, but the designs out there were conceptual. They are not looking at the specific access points and doors and all those different things. They were conceptual in the print, so they are even not at that level to block those alleyways. So those types of things should be decided going forward. So I just wanted to give assurance that that was a previous answer that was given on a similar question. I do hope that there will be a juncture where you be very much paying attention to the freight routes for the existing businesses in that area. I assume that you would, because that will be something that'll be very important to be mindful of in future planning, to make sure that those are adequately there. We heard from some folks talking about accessibility in parking. Yes, lots of people are talking about parking, but the accessibility aspect of it, just to be mindful of that little thing. The parking stuff, that is something that you guys have all very much been loud advocates on. I think that everyone hears you on the importance of that. The dynamics of it will change in the next, like, decade in our city, being the terminus that we are and being so close to public transit right there, I think will also have an impact on it. So this will be an evolving thing that I think we are all very mindful of, is a really, really important thing to the community. It's just not decided here today. But it will be an issue that we have to work on. I've advocated from the get-go for the soccer inclusion being there, and I am so excited, and full disclosure, I, you know, played soccer as a kid, and now my daughter does. And so I'm really, really excited that we actually will have potential for a women's soccer team here, so that my daughter can see that. I think that that is a benefit that we cannot understate as a possibility. Yes, love the Aqua Sox. Totally love the Aqua Sox. Please don't send me a bunch of emails. Already went through that. You guys are very, very great advocates, but I'm very, very excited about the aspect of the soccer, and I think that is just going to be even more beneficial with FIFA coming up and all that's happening in our state with that, and looking forward to the benefits that having all those different teams here for our youth sports and our aspirations and development on that end. So I don't think that that could be understated on like how much those, we have a gap right now in, for our youth, for them to do stuff, to have activities, to go places and do things. And I think that this is one of those things where it spurs development and spurs activity that is positive in ways that is hard to even grasp. But I think it will do a lot of positive things for our youth expanding there. The flagship restaurant possibility, I don't want you guys to like minimize that. I think that that would be awesome to have something there year-round where people could actually go, even when there aren't events going on. So please make sure the, consider that in the future, and that seems like that would be an awesome revenue generator. So just beating a dead horse on that one. I think that the consultation that my colleague here, Councilmember Ryan, brought up of working with stakeholders and getting feedback, and I forget the exact term she was using, but it sounded brilliant. I hope that some of that also generates into local communities, that we are looking at how we can make this advantageous to small local businesses. So if that is something where they come in and they're vending, or they get exposure, or whatever avenues, I think that that should be something that we should really pay attention to, so that our small local businesses here in Everett can also benefit from the stadium, even if they're not a permanent year-round fixture. Let's see. Okay, I think, oh, jobs, can't understate jobs. We know that. Let's see. Anything else that I missed on here that I scribbled down in my notes? Yeah, essentially, I don't really want to deal with the taking no action and risk losing the Aqua Sox, because my email inbox is way too full right now. So I'm going to be supporting this one for the downtown location, and I appreciate everyone's comments and everything you pointed out.
Thank you. So I get to go last, which is always good and bad, right? As you could tell from the comments of this council, everyone here is passionate, and they care about the details, and they care about this community. Really, it comes down for me to begin, is to thank a lot of people, and, I mean, we have our Fiscal Advisory Committee. There's a lot of hours spent on that. The mayor's staff, I know you have spent some extra time here, extra hours, and thank you for picking out some really top-notch consultants. I really appreciate it. Couple observations, and I just begin with is, I just want to acknowledge the community itself. We've had a lot of dedicated residents, families that come to Aqua Sox, and I know this is a change for them. There's always uncertainty when you become a fan of baseball, and there's uncertainty in your home team. So I just kind of want to recognize that that, you know, we talk about the emotion, that's always part of it. I also want to recognize the school district. I mean, right now, we have a home field that's willing to take, hey, use it as long as you need. hey, use it as long, as long as you need. We love the team. We love the fans. We love the city. So my hat's off to the administration and the school district. Hey, use our field until you guys are ready to potentially go to another location. That is just, that is a really big deal. As you could tell, that one of the things as a decision-maker is we're really trying to manage risk. And the process that we've gone through, I just don't think we could have reduced risk anymore, especially with the design-build process. There's still a lot of risk ahead of us. I'm hopeful that, and I think it's going to happen, that here in the next few months, as we continue to come back and make decisions on the design-build, that there's going to be a more and more need for resources. So I'm, I think this process, it's good, it's a good balance. And I think reducing that risk is about as best as we can get as far as these projects. Being dependent upon private investors is a challenge sometimes, but I also think it's a really good thing. Everyone talks about public and private investment and working together. Well, this is, we're, not only it's going to happen, but we're dependent on that relationship to go forward. So I think there's going to be a lot of great things that come out of this, out of this project. You know, the bottom line is that we are, we have spent some money on this, on investment. And I think the Aqua Sox and the ability to have this team is worth it. We're going to commit some more money here after this. So, and then the numbers keep going up. So I'm just looking for that balance with the reduction of risk as we get further committed. So, thank you. And, you know, engagement in our downtown, it's, it's, being part of the community for a lot of years, it's just always been a dream to have that whole area just be activated and the growth. And just the identity of Everett is really important to me. And unlike Leo, I really love this town. I know he does. But calling this my home and saying, hey, we've got these things, come to Everett, is so important. And I know you can't put a price on that, and though there we shouldn't, but there certainly is a balance between that emotion and loving our community and managing the right risk as we go and further develop, especially the downtown. So, thank you for that time.
At this point, yes, Councilmember Tui.
Well, I just want to ask staff and our consultant, a lot of really great concerns were brought up as we went down the line here. And I know what, we have another decision point in January. It would be nice to have, to know what our expectations are, what will we have, what of all of the things we've asked for, will we be able to have before that point? So we have our, our expectations are not waiting for something that's just not going to happen, or is it, or will we get that information?
Thanks, Councilmember. I'm sorry, I'm just taking a moment. There was, there were a long wish list that was articulated. I think the core of that is the financial clarity that you're seeking. And I know earlier you said, you know, by the end of January, will I have, you know, absolute financial clarity on this deal? And the answer is no. We will have more. Ultimately, you know, you won't have that clarity until the point that, you know, you are prepared to issue the bonds and fund the contract for construction. It'll be a long process to get there. Each iteration, though, you will get more and more clarity and more confidence. And I think, Council President Schwab, you said it well, you know, further understand how you're managing the risk to those dollars. So, you know, by the end of January, we'll have more clarity, you know, we'll be further along in conversations with our private partners, we'll be further along in analysis of the revenue and the potential for bonds. And all the interest rates just came down again. That's a good thing for us. That will buy you more with your money for this project. But that piece will take a little bit longer. And, you know, that's true of all of these components, you know, the clarity around how many parking spaces, right? As design advances, we get that first round of estimates from the contractor and from the progressive design-build team. That'll be a really important moment on this project as we're sizing all of those expectations.
And I'll just jump in. I hope you've all noticed that we take feverish notes when you're up here, asking questions and asking for additional information, and we work really hard to follow up as quickly as possible and get back to you. We have multiple team members here tonight taking notes, and we always meet on Thursdays together after council meetings, and we compare notes to make sure we try to capture it all. We also have staff that re-watch the meeting to make sure we're capturing it all. With so much said tonight, I would ask that you give us a week or two, and then we will get back to you with kind of a similar memo of sorts, saying, here's what we heard, here's some expectations of when we might have that type of information for you, so that we'll provide as much clarity as possible and kind of scope it out in a timeline fashion, but been articulated well. There is frustration that we don't have all the information, and we're not going to have all the information at the end of January. We're going to get more and more information. But before you make a big decision to spend the big dollars, you will have that information, and that is the biggest off-ramp you will also have if you decide not to move forward.
Councilmember Zarlingo.
Well, as an engineer all my life, I'm thinking about the process of building. And I guess I want to make sure I understand this correctly in terms of commitment. I think with the normal process of design, bid, build, you would design, then you would send this out for bid, and the constructor, who didn't really have a role in any of the designing or its trade-offs, or its sequencing, or any of its risks and costs, would then promise to build for a particular price, and they would probably have to build in a significant margin there, big enough to insulate them from catastrophic risk for their business, small enough hopefully that they did not lose the bid, lose the job. The difference then with progressive design-build is that constructor is involved in the design with the engineers, with the architects, with the team and the criteria for Major League Baseball. They are then, they are involved in that process, and at the end of that process, they understand what is needed to do, what is needed to build, and they then are promising to build whatever was chosen, maybe staged, maybe all at once, for that price. So there is presumably more certainty, less padding on their part required because less risk on their part. I guess I want to make sure I understand those processes well, because those inform me about what we're going to be committed to at what stage and what we will know at that point.
Councilmember, that's exactly right. That's the benefit of the progressive design-build process, is the alignment between the design team and the contractor. So you're getting that real-time feedback from the market. And then fundamentally, at the end of the day, you as decision-makers will not be able to authorize a construction contract that's beyond your means. Just a fundamental reality. So all of the things we're talking about, program aspirations, accommodating MLB requirements, accommodating USL parking requirements, must align with the financial capabilities of the project. I mean, that's just a fundamental reality. And there's, it just, as the process goes along, right, you get greater clarity around all of those until you reach, as the mayor said so well, that critical threshold before you sign a construction contract.
Yeah, I'm mindful that there will be some significant spending that we'll have to do to get there, but we really have no choice in this case other than abandoning the process and losing our Aqua Sox.
And can I add just one element to that, is that oftentimes in the typical design and then bid process, people build a design beyond their means without knowing they're doing it. And I think we all are going into this with eyes wide open to our limited means, and that's just not going to, that's not going to happen. And it's not going to be like you get the bids back and you're like, oh, my gosh, we got to cut 10, $20 million out of this project, who's, you know, all the different bells and whistles. So it's just a very conservative way of going at the project. And the only thing that I can guarantee is that the Major League Baseball criteria will be met, so the Aqua Sox will stay here.
Okay. No further comments. I just want to thank everyone in the process, and I, the transparency is overwhelming. So thank you for being available. Even the definitions of our CIP funds have been defined. So I know sometimes it takes a lot more questions to get there, but the, I just, one last process is the transparency has been amazing, and it's there and all available. So thank you. So Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to item number 16, authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Shields, Oblets, Johnson Incorporated in the amount of $457,986.
So move.
Seconded.
Motion seconded. Made. Comments? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay. Item number 22, Council Bill 2411-40, third and final reading. Adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Fleming Street Bicycle Corridor, Fund 303, Program 124, as established by ordinance number 3858-21. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Council Bill 2412-42, third and final reading. Adopt a ordinance establishing the basic salary schedule for employees of the city of Everett for 2025. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
A motion seconded. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Vogel.
I just want to make sure you weren't here for nothing and waiting for the whole time. So I will ask the question, there was a slight change. Could you explain that to us, please?
Of course. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Candy Bartlett, Labor and Administrative Services Director. Yes, there were two changes made to the salary ordinance. Sorry, as I get my breath from walking from the other room. Lots of people here tonight. The first one was, there was one error, there was one classification that was accidentally omitted. So we included that one, and that was in your, the memo that you received tonight. The second one was, unfortunately, the AFSCME contract did not pass, was not passed by their membership. We have reached out to AFSCME already. They were quite surprised themselves, the leadership, and so we want to give them time to be able to meet with their membership and get more information so that we can get back to the table as soon as possible. But I'm guessing that will be after the beginning of the new year. And so the change to the ordinance then was we reverted the wages for AFSCME classifications back to the 2024 Thank you. That's all I have at this time.
Any other questions or comments about Action Act 23? Okay. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. And with no further business, happy holidays and happy new year, and we'll see you back in January.